Am I on? Hello, everybody, welcome. Can you guys hear me back there?
No.
I think I'm talking pretty loudly. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to call the May 6th Planning Commission meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please? Somebody going to do a roll call?
Commissioner McKinnon?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Himmoridge?
Here.
Not Commissioner Sue. Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
And Chair Newbold?
Here.
All right.
Thank you. We are going to have a town hall discussion tonight on the downtown specific plan. The Planning Commission is going to move over here so we can hear what you have to say, and I believe staff is going to sit up here and answer questions and also listen to what you have to say. Yep. And I am going to turn it over right now to David Martin, the Planning Director.
Thank you, Garde. Thank you all for coming tonight. This is an amazing turnout. I think we must have 200, 300 people here. So, thank you again for coming. Awesome. I'm going to quickly turn it over to Daniel Isafano. He is with MIG. He's the moderator tonight, and I will let Daniel take it from here.
Very good. Thank you all for coming this evening. As David said, we appreciate this huge --
Bye, everyone.
Okay. We'll get our signing sound going here. How much, how about that?
How about that?
Okay. Anyways, once again, my name's Daniel Isafano. I'm going to moderate tonight's session. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Given this great turnout, we're going to do our best to get everyone who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so, and toward that end, we have gotten a stack of speaker cards. So, we decided not to put any strict time limit on it, just to make it a little more informal and give people a chance to get out what they need to say here this evening. I know many of you have come with questions. We'll do our best to get those questions written down. We may not be able to answer all the questions, in which case, we'll need to follow up with some further documentation appropriate to the various questions you ask here this evening. We will be taking a running video and audio recording of the entire meeting, so we have that as a reference. Plus, we'll be taking notes up here on the big board for more instantaneous feedback, and so later on, we can do a very quick, fast turnaround summary of the high points of the meeting. Again, I want to stress that we'd like to give you the chance to come up. We'll have microphones set up for you to do that, and we hope to have a really good critical discussion. Obviously, with your attendance here this evening, we know how important this meeting is and how important the topic of the downtown here is in Santa Monica, and there's a lot of reasons for that. This is a great community, and I know you want to keep it that way, which is why you're here. And we want to understand what are the key issues, the key principles upon which we can base this specific plan for downtown. We're going to start with a very brief presentation, so you have some background information. Bring everybody up to the same point. We promise to keep that as brief as possible, and then we'll get right on into the comment and question period. So, with that, I'd like to have Francie Stephan, who is the Planning Manager for the Downtown Specific Plan and for the City of Santa Monica, to open this presentation. Francie?
Wow. Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. I apologize, I'm a little bit hoarse tonight. I will try and get through this with as little coughing as possible. I did hear from someone in the crowd, they were interested in knowing who Daniel was. Daniel is a consultant to the city. He works for a firm called MIG. It's headquartered up in Northern California, but he has many years of working on facilitating public meetings just like this to make sure that public input is incorporated into the process. So, for any of you that were interested in that, that's that information. So, quickly, I thought it would be, first, I want to welcome you to the fourth big public workshop we've had for the downtown specific plan, and the fifth time we've talked with the Planning Commission. So, it's been a pretty robust process, but we are always glad to have the input from all of our residents and glad to keep this process going. So, tonight, our main purpose, since there are a lot of new faces in the crowd, I'm going to spend a couple of minutes talking about some of the things we've done so far in the specific plan, really just touching on the high points. So, please do visit the website if you want to get in more detail, or feel free to call any of us to get more information. And we wanted to vote most of the time tonight to hearing your comments on urban form, height, and design concepts. I really want to stress that, really, this is a work in progress. No decisions have been made on this, for this project so far. It's a robust process. We started it in 2011. We've had a lot of stakeholder meetings, community input. We've done some work looking at existing conditions. We have not even drafted a plan yet, and even after we've drafted the plan, we have to do a full program EIR. That's another nine-month process where we're going to be looking at alternatives, like you would normally do in an EIR, looking at alternatives, a range of different options for the future from the exist, from the existing condition, all the way to whatever we think the maximum could be. And that will involve community processes as well. So, be, rest assured, no decisions have been made, no train, expo, or otherwise has left the station yet. You did not miss anything. So, the starting point, really, we have in the loose some guiding principles and goals and policies for downtown. Really, what we're looking at is, this is the part of the 4 percent of the city that we said we would focus investment in, so that we can really protect the residential neighborhoods, so we can protect the remaining 90 percent, 96 percent of the city. And while we're doing that, we have to maintain focus on the need to address our traffic congestion in Santa Monica, looking at ways we can proactively reduce trips. Not all trips, we recognize, people really still want to be able to drive for those critical things that need to be, that everyone needs to drive to. And we just want to make sure that we're cognizant of needing to chart a sustainable course for the future, so that we have real choices and alternatives. Supporting economic health, looking at the downtown really as an engine for all of the city, maximizing livability and our sustainable commitment to the future, and connecting to the downtown and the civic center. These are among the things that the loose spelled out, that we want to make sure that we incorporate into this downtown process. As I mentioned, there has been so much really great input so far. We've had multiple community workshops, meetings with the Planning Commission, the City Council, the landmarks commissions. We've had discussions with Downtown Santa Monica Inc., which is the Business Improvement District tasked with managing the downtown. So, we've had a robust process, but certainly, it's not over. And we've heard some interesting things that really, you know, downtown is a really successful place, and we are really happy with how it has been performing, but we have to be ever cognizant of the challenges that it could face, as things like the retail environment changes, as people buy more and more online. What does it mean to our retail environment? As we add more housing, what kind of resources do we need for those housing units? We also need to always think about, downtown has this fantastic history. It's one of the really early settling places in downtown, in the city, and there is this really great fabric of urban, of historic structures that we want to think about. We need to think about the fact that walking in downtown is one of the few places in Southern California where you can go and walk block after block after block and have a really great experience, and that's part of what makes it desirable, and it's part of what makes it unique. And last, of course, but not least, the ocean air, the light, the breeze, the thing that really is just wonderful here in Santa Monica. But we did hear some desire to enhance things, too. We need to always be thinking about our circulation network. How do we make sure people can get to Expo? How do we make sure they can get off Expo and get to where they're going clearly? How do we respond to the fiscal challenges the city has been facing with the loss of RDA? Like it or not, redevelopment funds have helped us fund a lot of the major infrastructure in downtown, and we need to figure out how we're going to make that happen going forward into the future with the loss of that very important funding source. How do we consider the types and range of housing we've got? Do we need to diversify? Do we need to be looking at other things? What's the need there? How do we carefully design all the public spaces so they're delightful to be in and they really add to the environment? And how do we really recognize that downtown isn't just a place to shop? It's a place we want to go and do other things. We want to be enriched as people. We want to enjoy the outdoors. And how do we think about creating jobs that pay a real wage, that people can afford to live here, and they make, they make for good futures for all of the nieces, nephews, children, grandchildren of everyone in the community? So, the downtown specific plan, what's it going to do? It's going to look at major, these five major categories, and I put them up merely to sort of help organize as I go quite quickly through some of the things we've been doing. We don't have time tonight to go into detail, but again, look at the website. But we'll be looking, you know, through the planning process, looking at how to preserve character, circulation, and parking, looking at pedestrian orientation uses, and the built, and the built environment. Character. What have we been doing? Well, we looked at the historic structures. We looked at the contributing structures, get a sense for what's out there on the ground. We looked at the character of the public spaces. What is it like to be out on the street? What's working, what's not working? What's the character of the private frontages? Because it's not just the public right-of-way, it's what's going on right behind that building facade, the relationship between the inside and the outside that makes for a really interesting environment. You can have a beautiful street. If it's right next to a blank wall, it's not that great to walk there. We looked at circulation and parking. First and foremost, we have an incredible amount of investment coming into downtown for circulation and parking. We have a fantastic light rail station that's coming online. We've got the esplanade to connect it to the rest of the civic center of the beach in the downtown. Parking Structure 6, the California Incline, numerous capital and programmatic improvements to help people get into and through the downtown. But we need to make sure we're putting in the supportive structure to make sure that they work well. So, we've spent quite a lot of time thinking about the station itself and the esplanade, how to, how to take a capital improvement and make it, and how to, how to really enhance the function of every mode around it. This is a great, you know, this is going to be a really great asset, so that we can get people in and out of this, in and out of the city, get them oriented to where they want to go, and help people really move through this part of town, which is busy. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be busy with pedestrians. It's going to be busy with a lot of people trying to get through. Bikes and transit, we've had a 30 percent increase in the last two years of people biking to work. That's a great thing for all of us, because it clears the roads for those who need to drive, and it helps people who are biking be healthier. It helps everyone in all, in all parts of the city. Also, transit. Big Blue Bus is really putting in a major effort in an upcoming year to think about how to route people to the transit stations, making sure that residents have access to the Expo stations when they want to take the bus, and that will help supplement the other access points to the, to the train. Parking and wayfinding, we know that we have those great parking structures. I'm sure you have experienced, as all of us have, that occasionally, you go to the parking structure you're used to going to, and it's full. It's frustrating. It's very frustrating. What we're trying to do is look at ways we can unlock some of those spaces. For example, moving some of the monthly parkers into the remote structures here at the civic center and other places. How can we be creating new parking resources at the periphery by working in partnership with various property owners? And how can we unlock the ones that aren't being used now, that are underutilized, through things like sharing and other mechanisms? And then, once we have the spaces, how can we make sure people get there easily? If you know where there's spaces available, you'll probably drive, you'll follow signs to where those, to where those are. If it's easier than going to where you were used to, that might be full. So, we need to make sure it's both access and wayfinding. Automobile connectivity, you know, it's not, there aren't a lot of opportunities to expand connections, but there are some. And near the freeway, we have some old superblocks, and we have some congested off-ramps that could, that have some opportunities if we want to make the investment to improve those access points right along the freeway. And vehicle trip reduction, always paramount, making sure we work with employers and employees and all of the potential investments to reduce vehicle trips. The pedestrian experience, looking at ways we can take advantage of any time properties change over to expand that sidewalk. We know that people don't want to move the curb and lose lanes in the downtown. We've heard that, and we're, but we still need to look at ways we can expand pedestrian space, so there's room for people to walk comfortably and safely through the downtown. For example, if this property were to turn over, here's an example of today, if you pull a building back by five feet, you could get a 15 to 20-foot wide sidewalk there to make it an easier, more pleasant walk. In Wilshire, this example, where, one of the few places where there might be some excess capacity, this would be one of the few opportunities we might have to expand the sidewalk out into the road and create a 20-foot-wide walkway where people could then walk right to the St. Monica statue into the, into the park. From a use standpoint, again, it's really important what's going on behind the front of the building, not just what's on the sidewalk. We've carefully looked at the ground floor uses throughout the downtown, since that's mostly what you experience day-to-day, looking at where there's clusters of different types of activities. We've looked at where there's public art that might make it a more interesting walk and lure you to walk a little bit more, a little bit further, a little bit more comfortably. Look where there's existing public spaces where you might take a rest on your way where you're going. And thought about, are there ways that we could place those strategically throughout the downtown, so that everyone is within no more than three minutes of either a resting space or a public art piece, so that you could really have a sort of seamless experience walking through the downtown. Buildings and height, I bet some of you want to talk about that tonight. So, before we get into it, I thought it was important to give some form and some context to height regulations. We talk a lot about numbers, right? We talk about floor area ratio, which is essentially the ratio of the square footage you can build to the size of the lot that you're on. It often is, it's, it's very intellectual, so I thought it would be helpful to have a couple of examples of recently-built projects that are built under current regulations. These are regulations that exist today. An example in the upper left is the Austria del Piccolo Building. Both the top buildings are six-story buildings. They're mostly residential on the top, so those are smaller floors. Typically, when people build buildings, they have lower height in the residential portions than they do in the commercial. So, those are both six-story buildings, one at 3.5 FAR and the other one at 3.9 FAR. On the bottom, you've got one, one residential building and one commercial building. Now, we don't have a more recent version of commercial buildings, because we haven't had a new office building built in Santa Monica for two decades. So, oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm sounding like a frog increasingly, I'm sure. Sorry. And so, you see, both are 3.3 FAR, but you'll notice that the building on the right is significantly taller, because it's got that taller floor-to-floor height for commercial. This is what exists today in terms of maximum building heights, and I know it's too much to take in from a screen. We have them in the back, if you would like to evaluate them in more detail, and certainly, you're welcome to look at these, you know, to, to see these in, in more detail later. But basically, in the core of the downtown, the sort of classic old bayside district, maximum heights range from about 70, 76 to 84 feet. That's the pervade, that's the existing height regulation that exists today, and then it tapers slightly as you get, go to the east, to 50 and 60 feet. So, that's just the existing height right now. I'll get into existing FAR in a second. I just wanted to share our thinking as we think about options for the downtown. And again, nothing's been decided. We've put out some idea as an option for what we could do for height and FAR, but the thinking is really, how can we come up with height and FAR that respects the character of the downtown that has been emerging over the last decade and decades? How do we stay within current standards if those are still working? And how do we simplify the base map and make it so that everything is more transparent? What isn't clear right now is there's a number of incentives and discounts in the current regulatory structure. So, well, something may say that it's a 3.5 FAR. Its effective FAR may be almost double that. So, we wanted to sort of simplify that, so that it was clear what was where, and see to what extent we can apply the loose concept of community benefits to the downtown, so that buildings leave their context better than when they found them. So, an option would be looking at a tiering system, where there would be a baseline tier, ministerial, a ministerial tier that's lower than what you can build by, by right today, of 32 to 39 feet. This is essentially showing all of the downtown district, by the way. Then, with a discretionary permit, you could, one could consider allowing up to 50 to 60 feet. Now, remember, 50 to 60 feet is what was already permitted, basically, east of Sixth Street, and with this, you would be looking at a discretionary permit and be required to provide community benefits to the, to the community. And then, in that core bayside district, again, 76 to 84 feet, like we have today. So, you might say, well, what's all the hubbub about? This is essentially the height map, more or less, than what we have today. And so, we thought we would clarify, this hopefully is again in the back, we'll clarify. The areas in yellow are ones that are not, you know, no change, would be no change if, if we pursued this option. No change from the loose along Lincoln, and no change from existing zoning ordinance, basically, between Sixth Court all the way to Second. What you see along Second Street is a five-foot, consideration of a five-foot increase, so that the ground floor height was a little bit more gracious and conducive to commercial. And closer to the freeway is where you see the integration of the downtown core into, into the areas along the freeway. So, that's where the height would jump from what's existing today, or what's permitted today, to be the same as the rest of the downtown core, which is 84 feet. FAR has a, has a similar layout. Here's what I, the two columns here illustrate what I was saying earlier, that there's, there's the FAR on the books, and then there's the FAR that you can get to with incentives. Now, some of them are not achievable, because once you fulfill, fulfill all the other development standards, like setbacks and stepbacks and height modulation, you can't get to 6.5, for example. But that's what's on the books today. And you see, again, in the old bayside district core, you see between a 4.5 and a 6.5 FAR tapering down to the east. In this case, the FARs to the south, closer to the freeway, are actually a bit higher, so relative to height, they get a little bit more FAR. One option is that we could continue those FARs in the eastern part of the city, but bring down the FAR, so reduce the FAR in the downtown core, to something that's achievable, that fits more within line of what's all there. So, it'd be going from the 6.5 incentivized to a 4.0. So, that would be a reduction. And then, along ocean, a transition down to 2.0. As I said, you know, height and FAR are but two of the components that make for a good design and good urban form. We need to be thinking about stepbacks, setbacks, floor plate size, so buildings don't look too massive, building separation, so that light and air can get in between ground floor open spaces and design for access to light and air. So, there are many other things we need to be thinking about, but we need to start somewhere. So, we're starting tonight with those two items. Some of you have heard about opportunity sites, I bet. And this is very confusing, and so, you know, I, I'm glad that we're having this conversation tonight, because it is quite confusing. We heard from the community that there was a desire to have some benefits and priorities met in the downtown. That includes affordable workforce housing, preservation issues, open space, cultural uses, things that would really enrich the downtown. What we did as staff is look at ways we could, like, what are the, what are the sites that could accommodate those kinds of uses? What are the sites, what site characteristics, you know, should we filter for to see where that might work? So, we looked at things that are larger lots, sites with good access, so there'd be minimal traffic impacts, opportunities to make real places, so someplace where you can achieve enough things that they make for really great urban environments or just community environments. Site dimensions, so that you can get official, efficient public parking, so that if we could get some additional parking, that would be something someone could build, near the freeway, near the Expo Station, and of course, public open space opportunities. So, what you see is eight opportunity sites. Some of them were called out specifically in the loose. They're named by their intersection, and the others fall within a category that's defined in the loose as sites that are sort of near the Expo Station and the freeway. And so, that, what you see in front of you is the combination of those two categories, those that were called out and those that were refined through the, through the downtown specific plan process that I talked about, looking at what sites would be appropriate, what sites could accommodate those kinds of benefits. I can't stress enough that we have not put forward any height or FAR parameters for the opportunity sites at all. No public meeting, no staff report, no written document anywhere has proposed what those heights and FARs should be. We need to work with the community to decide what we should study as alternatives for those through this equa process that can inform our final decision that would ultimately go into the downtown specific plan. So, what we would like to do is hear your input on what those are. And this is very confusing. There's a lot of information out there in the community, because in the midst of doing this process, the market hasn't stopped. The market has moved forward, and we have received development applications for a few of these sites that are significantly above and beyond the heights and FARs that we've talked about so far tonight. So, just know that what we need to do through this process is identify a, a range that we think is an appropriate range of study, that we can look at in the EIR, that will inform a final decision when we get there. But no train has left the station again. On the opportunity sites, the idea is that, that they would be required to meet these extraordinary community benefits, many of the things that we've talked about, that multiple community benefits would be included on those sites. We have heard from the community, they want to understand the physical form, so we're in the process of building a 3D model, so that different potential futures, from the no-build to a future build, could be looked at in three dimensions to understand what would that look like and feel like in the downtown. So, we have the basic framework of the model built. We're still working and make sure we've worked all the bugs out and gotten everything right. But the model enables us to do things like, look at it from this angle down Colorado, towards the west. We can turn it and look south from Fourth Street and Santa Monica Boulevard, looking south. We can even go out over the ocean and look back at the city and see how the form looks. So, this will be part of the process as we move forward in doing the analysis necessary to come to a decision. We will be preparing a program EIR for this. That means that we will be looking at a range of height and density. We will be looking at all of the categories of analysis that you typically look at in EIR. Many of you are familiar with what those are. We'll be looking at shade and shadow and traffic demands, and we will evaluate and discuss the scenarios with you through that process. Again, this is the sort of process slide simplified, but basically, gives you an idea of, you know, we're going to, we're going to work on next steps. We're, we're here to hear your input tonight, and I'm happy to report, that is the last thing I have to say. So, we are ready to hear from you, and I will hand it back to Daniel.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Francie. Okay. So, like we said, we promised to keep that brief. You know, that's a lot of information nevertheless, and we will have that entire PowerPoint show available on the city's website following tonight's meeting, so you'll be able to download it, look at it, study it in more detail. As Francie said, we do have boards describing some of those more complicated charts over there in the back of the room. So, we do want to now call everybody up. We want to have you come up to this microphone here in the center, and just so we can get everything recorded, not lose any of the detail. We can pick you up on the video and the audio, that way. Really appreciate your helping us out with that. We have a huge stack of cards. We're going to try to get through everybody who wishes to speak at least once, and if we still have time at the end, we'll continue on for another round, if you so desire. We do have staff members to assist us if we can answer any of the questions of a more technical nature. As long as they don't take too long, we'll try to get through them. If we can't answer the question, we will be taking notes on that and be able to come back to that later. So, we'll have staff in a moment introduce themselves as we get everybody up here to the microphone. So, these are not in any particular order, mostly in the order they were turned in, and we're just going to ask that you come up and get ready, so we can be efficient in getting through the different comments. I'll do my best to pronounce your names here, but bear with me on that. So, we have, let's see, several cards were turned in right away. Lauren Paul, let's see, Darber Evans, again, I'm sorry if I mispronounced, Eleanor Blumberg, and Naomi Renskins. So, if you could all come up forward here, and we'll just get everybody lined up, and then I'll get everybody on from there. I think following that, we have Diane Simpson, and then Lorene Ubank, and we'll go on from there. So, do we have Lauren as the first speaker?
She stepped out. She'll be right back.
She stepped out? Okay. So, then, what about Darber Evans? Is this?
Darlene.
Darlene Evans, sorry. Go ahead, ma'am, please.
Hi. My name is Darlene Evans, and I'm a resident of Sunset Park, and I came today because I think the building height standards that Santa Monica's had for many years are appropriate. I totally reject any possibility of increasing them beyond the four to six-story high. If we're, we've always been a community that has been community resident-friendly and open-air spaces, and having buildings that high, the density would be just incredibly bad. The downtown is already gridlocked. Lincoln Boulevard is gridlocked, having more hotels and huge density places, it's just not out of char, it's out of character for the city of Santa Monica. As a long-term resident, I really would not like to see that. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, Eleanor Blumberg, Eleanor. Thank you. And if we could have the staff, now they're all assembled, maybe just self-introductions. Francie, you've already met. Dave?
David Martin.
And Sarah?
Carolyn Jones.
And Travis. Okay, so there they are. Thank you. Eleanor, please.
Yeah, my name is Eleanor Blumberg, and I've been a resident of the city I love for more than 30 years. The loose plan has really promised us that they will ensure that any new developments protect the light, the air, and the best aspects of our city. But there's one thing that troubles me, and that's the open-ended opportunity sites. It means that those people who apply for those development in those areas, in a sense, the way it's written now, are given a blank slate. There are no, they can come up with whatever kind of things that they think they want. My feeling is that the plan, the downtown specific plan should cover the entire downtown area. There should be parameters, there should be height limits, there should be restrictions also on the opportunity sites, rather than people coming in with blank check, blank slate, and no guidelines whatsoever. The developments should be given the same rules and regulations that anybody else developing in any other part of the downtown specific plan would be given. And I urge that the plan deal with the totality of the area and not eliminate rules and regulations for the opportunity sites.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Eleanor. Thank you. Let's see, is it Lawrence?
Lawrence Ubank. Okay. As board member of a local neighborhood coalition and a member of the citywide neighborhood councilor leadership team, I wish to express our abject rejection of this downtown specific plan in terms of its expression, the manner in which it was constructed, and the vision it proclaims for our city. Notwithstanding Francine's presentation, we believe residents have never been considered stakeholders in this process, and the results show it. While benefits of anticipated economic activity can be debated, we believe the overall effect on Santa Monica residents is categorically negative, bringing a deleterious acceleration of our most vaccine concerns, namely traffic, congestion, parking, height, and density. As presented, the plan addresses the priorities of property developers and the Chamber of Commerce, and is essentially a vehicle to attract short-term visitors, tourists, and high net worth individuals willing to pay for the views they obstruct from other residents, while leaving us with the detritus of increased traffic, parking migraines, and natural light degradation. We consider opportunity sites to be vehicles, opportunities, for unrestricted scale, height, and density and community benefits as negotiating chits that allow developers' economic advantage for offering residents paltry inducement, as for example, the Miramar's proposed benefit of allowing us to look at a tree that has stood for 180 years. Others on the leadership council following me will offer our opinions and alternatives regarding the issues affecting residents, particularly height, density, and traffic. But as a statement of purpose, I can unequivocally say that we reject this process and our residents exclusion from it. As now formulated, we believe the downtown specific plan results radically alter and will irrevocably wreck the low-slung beach town atmosphere that attracted those of us who weren't lucky enough to be born here. Santa Monica is now a classic example of recurring human conflict, the insatiable quest for speculative return on capital at the expense of ordinary citizens' quality of life. We expect, we expect planning commission members and city councilors to give city staff clear and unequivocal direction that residence groups must be included in any and all planning decisions and policies. Further, we demand that per the loose, appropriate height and density limits be established for all buildings without exception, including the so-called opportunity sites. We believe this specific, this downtown specific plan was created through a process that was deliberately and cynically taken from the Santa Monica residents, and this is to advise you that we, the residents, intend to take it back.
All right. Okay, we have Mary Marlowe, Diana Gordon, and John Murdock. Murdock?
Murdoch.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Mary Marlowe. I'm one of the community leaders that helped Lawrence take a look at what we wanted. So after this, you're probably saying, what do residents want? Let me tell you. We want a human-scale beach town that the loose promised us, and we expect that the character and scale of our built environment, which includes many one, two, and three-story buildings, as noted in the staff report to the planning commission, will remain and actually be the norm going forward. We expect that the character and scale of downtown needs to have an identified group of conservation districts, as does the Bergamot Plan, with properties within those districts that are prime candidates for preservation or adaptive reuse, as well as standards and strategies for achieving their protection. We also expect that the design review process for Tier Two, that's anything above 32 feet, really only goes to 50 feet. We just can't understand why a design review process would go to six to eight stories. That makes no sense. We also think that the 84-foot height limit that's in downtown now should be the height limit for everything in the city, including the so-called opportunity sites. There is no reason to have these sites be much taller, denser, and bigger than anything else in the city. We expect that there's going to be a circulation and parking analysis that's been done for downtown, as well as any plans to improve this, because we know it needs improvements. I think as residents, we all know, try and drive downtown on the weekend. Good luck. We expect that any draft plan under the loose should include a built-out scenario, and we're seeing the beginnings of that. We wanted to see 3D drawings, so you can put buildings in and see how they look, rather than, like Denny Zane said, when they first started building the water garden, gee, it looks smaller on paper. We never want to say that again. Okay? We expect that the same model will be used for proposed changes to the existing zoning in the draft plan, and that we think any draft plan needs to have a very clear community benefit chart that differentiates community benefits from design standards and from capital improvements the city's already planning on making. We disagree that sidewalks, roads, capital improvements are community benefits. We think they're necessary for a downtown, and they should be part of the overall plan. So we expect staff to come back with a better plan. Thank you.
Diana Gordon is next, and after that, John Murdock, and then John Smith.
Good evening. I'm Diana Gordon. I'm the co-chair of the Santa Monica Coalition for a Liveable City. We formed back in 2005. We were in the midst of the very same struggle. We're in the midst of tonight. In 2005, the city, through the planning department, proposed three 21-story towers for our downtown Santa Monica place. You were there, Mr. Daniel. You were the facilitator for that process. Those of you that fought with us for that, beat back that proposal of three 21-story towers, and tonight, we have three hotels proposed on so-called opportunity sites, which are anything-go sites right now, as far as the city planners are concerned. And I'm here tonight to tell you that residents, we must take back our city. And the first thing we need to do is to tell the city unequivocally that residents are stakeholders. They are as much stakeholders in our city. In fact, the downtown is our community living room. And when the city entered into a contract with a consultant, in which the city determined that the stakeholders to develop and shape this downtown plan were development interests, business interests, the downtown Santa Monica Inc., the chamber, that excluded residents who were a vital component of this process. And this plan is much further along than you're hearing from the planners tonight. It began in November of 2011, under a signed contract in which the consultant has already been paid over $333,000. And a key part of that consultant contract was to develop 3D modeling for the downtown. And it was to develop a technology in which our downtown, the planners as well as the development stakeholders, could look at all the various scenarios for how the downtown would look. It could look at what was important to residents in the first place, which is how built-out will our downtown be if we build to the 1984 current development standards? And as you heard from Francine, Stefan, tonight, there are, there's a good part of the downtown where the existing zoning is at 84 feet. The conversation should have started under the 3D modeling with whether the existing zoning no longer should apply to downtown, because it was developed in 1984 before we saw this explosion of growth, the billions and millions of square feet of office space, and the entire now development of the Bergamot area. So number one, we're residents, we're stakeholders, and it was wrong for the city to exclude us. And those of you who remember this, the Workforce Task Housing Project a few years ago, will recall that residents, as well as developers, as well as business interests, all of us were around to discuss how to get more workforce housing. And this is, if anything, a more vital effort, because it's our downtown. That's point number one. I have two more. Point number two, loose requires a downtown plan that sets heights and densities just like it does for the rest of the city. There is no support in the loose, and let me be crystal clear about this, for so-called opportunity sites to be parsed out at eight now, 10 tomorrow, that do not have the same height and density requirements that are set under loose for the other parts of the city. There's no support in loose for it. And it is frankly unreasonable for the city to have gone forward and exploit any of these opportunity sites by telling developers in those closed-door sessions, which are part of the contract, closed-door sessions, that they may submit applications for development agreements for 21-story towers, including condos that are posing as hotels, before there's a downtown specific plan. The law won't allow it, and no development agreement that has 21-story towers and heights and densities that exceed existing zoning should be going forward in this city. And the staff shouldn't be wasting time on it until we have a downtown specific plan that the residents in this room have been a part of. And finally, one last point about the modeling, because this really is upsetting. You have a contract in which, last month, one of the principal planners here was at the APA, that's the American Planning Association, with the consultant to talk about how effective the smart 3D modeling has been in the planning of downtown. One of the first things that the consultant did was supposed to be setting up a 3D model. Residents have been asking for a 3D model of this downtown. Why? We wanted to see if, under existing zoning, it was too much, and we should be pulling back. Then we wanted to know, if you're going to be talking about alternative development scenarios, show them to us. Show us the model. And what you hear tonight is almost the sound, the sound is, oh, well, it's sort of a Nash thing, we're just kind of getting it going. There was a presentation last month at the APA where you talked about how successful it was in having planned the downtown. So show us. Show us what you're doing with the modeling that we've paid over $300,000 for today.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. John Murdock, John Smith, and Chloe Williams is after that. Go ahead. John Murdock?
Yes, John Murdock. I'm a resident of Sunset Park. I moved to Santa Monica in 1970. I drove across the country, and I came down the 10 freeway to Robertson, then I went down Wilshire, and I didn't stop until I got to the end of Wilshire Boulevard. I got out of my car, I walked over to the nearest tourist information center, picked up a brochure. It said, "Santa Monica is one of the four places on Earth that has ideal climate." And I said, "I'm moving right here." And I did. And I walked around Santa Monica, and it was unbelievable. I came from the East Coast, I lived close to New York, I spent a lot of time in New York, and this was unbelievable. You could have fresh air, you could see the sky, you could have shops. I mean, Santa Monica is the ideal place, as far as I can tell, to live on this planet. However, I've been here for 40 years, and I must tell you, I should disclose, I am a land use attorney. I make my living filing SEQA cases and other land use lawsuits against developers. You know, I don't have anything against developers, except when they build too much. Somebody has to stand up and say, "Stop." But most of my lawsuits, in fact, almost all of them, are against the city of Los Angeles. Fortunately, Santa Monica, until very recently, has been a good city. But what I see happening now is it's out of control. In the last five or 10 years, overbuilding has created the congestion that we now live with. And I think it's, it's, yeah. I hope this isn't, you know, speeded-up time, because I do have a few things more to say. Being a land use attorney, you could have a chair if you like. I mean, I'm not talking specifically to you. Maybe I should turn around, but I do, okay. But here's the point. As a land use attorney, I must say, this whole concept of opportunity sites is outrageous. I mean, it's just outrageous. It is an attempt to have codified spot zoning put into place, where a developer can come in and say, "Hey, here's the menu of community benefits. I'll give you, okay, I'll give you public amenities." What does that mean? Nobody knows. Could be a five-foot sidewalk. That's a public amenity? Okay, iconic architecture. Well, Francine said, "The train hasn't left the station." Francine, the train left a while back. We saw the Geary plans. There it is, right there. It's in front of us right now. That train has left the station. I'm sorry. You don't pay Frank Geary to design a building like that without starting the train running. These things have been in the works for a while, and nobody knew about it until that hit the papers. So now you tell me that, oh, okay, iconic architecture is a community benefit? Well, one's man icon is another man's eyesore. Who knows what an icon is? You can't have, that's not an enforceable standard under the law. An iconic architecture is a community benefit? Please. That's not even, the English language doesn't have a category for that. Historic preservation. You've got six things here as community benefits. Historic preservation, we have a historical society, we have landmark commissions, we have all that already protected. That's not a community benefit for which you give a 20-story hotel. Okay? Gateways. Does anybody know what a gateway is? That's a community benefit. Where's the gateway in Santa Monica? You know what it is? It's that thing across Wilshire Boulevard, somewhere around Centinela. That's a gateway. For that, you're going to get another 10 stories. Okay? Come on, here we go. Public parking? I thought the city was supposed to provide public park, not the developers. Come on, we're not giving away the city in exchange for things that the city is supposed to provide. We're not giving up a beautiful community in order to get back a few tokens from the developers who are lining up to get these opportunity sites. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. We do intend to stay as long as necessary. John Smith is the next speaker. Chloe Williams is right after that. No time limits on purpose, because we wanted to let you use your judgment there where this is concerned, but we do want to make sure we get to everybody at the same time. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, folks. My name's John C. Smith. I belong to several neighborhood organizations. First off, I love Santa Monica, and I respect our public officials and our staff members who try to guide the city. But I got to tell you, I feel a little bit like Columbo tonight, because I've been going through the loose all for the last couple of days, and I can't find the term "opportunity site" anywhere. Could you please? The fact is, the term "opportunity site" was created just a short time ago with input from people developing interests. Opportunity sites are kind of a positive, a way to put a positive spin on projects of unspecified height and density in exchange for so-called community benefits. So far, those community benefits include a parking garage for a hotel that doesn't have one, and open space that will be closed to the public for hotel events. Another opportunity site includes an observation deck you won't see unless you pay to go up there, and a museum that hasn't defined what kind of museum it might be. One more thing about community benefits. The American Film Market executive who spoke at the State of the City address, he didn't say Santa Monica needs more hotels than opportunity sites. He said, "Santa Monica needs a red carpet venue to hold its event," and we're standing in it right now. So if you want to have real community benefits, we could begin here. Let's talk about the loose. The loose tells us in chapter 2.6, page 17, "to implement a new downtown specific plan to determine the appropriate range of building heights." A range is something like 0 to 60. It's, an appropriate range is not 0 to unspecified, undetermined, unlimited. The loose also says the DSP should ensure The loose also says, "The DSP should ensure that new buildings are compatible in scale with existing buildings and surrounding residential neighborhoods." Miramar Hotel, 22 stories. Apartment buildings right across the street on California, four or five. You decide. Bottom line, terms like "opportunity sites" and "unspecified" are not in the loose, and they don't belong in the downtown-specific plan either. The downtown-specific plan needs real specifics. Opportunity sites are mostly opportunities, all right, for developers. City Council, Planning Commission, city staff, please make sure a downtown-specific plan has real specifics. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. John, Chloe? Please, thank you very much. Okay.
Greetings, esteemed council planners, glorious fellow Santa Monicans, patriotic Americans, and welcome visitors. My name is Chloe Williams, and it is my honor and privilege to sustain the recommendations for the Frank Geary Building at Ocean Avenue and Santa Monica Boulevard. It will serve as a hallmark and insignia for Santa Monica as a glorious example of how fortunate we are to live in this beautiful city, beach city by the ocean. My degree is from Pepperdine University, Malibu, class of 1998, and after a 24-year hiatus, Pepperdine, Malibu is recognized as perhaps one of the most beautiful campuses in America by the Ivy League schools such as Harvard and Yale. The Frank Geary Building will do for Santa Monica what Frank, what Pepperdine does for Malibu, what the Music Center does for the downtown LA, what Santa Monica, the San Diego Latter Day Saint Temple does for the San Diego Building. It is the epitome of architect, of modern architecture, and yet it blends in so well with our ocean shore structures already in existence. And I want to say to you that Santa Monica is a forward-looking city. We are a beautiful city, and we are a small city, but we are also a progressive city. And I love each and every one of you, and I wish for you the very best. I look like I'm well off, but I am a low-income person. I make less probably than anybody here, $22,000 a year. And I do well with what I have, because I economize and I know value when I see it, and the Frank Geary Building is valued. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, the next several speakers, Elizabeth Vanderburg, Elizabeth, Alan Wall, and Jerry Rubin, if you could all come up, please.
I have the mic back. I love this, so...
Okay. We'll...
Yeah, I think, I think that's standing up here is kind of...
Whatever, whatever you like.
Thank you.
We're trying to get it all on tape.
Can I get it? Thank you. I'm sorry. What do you need?
What's that?
Okay, sure.
There was a guy sitting down. Oh, he's going to speak. Yeah.
Well, I don't think I could be as dynamic as Diana, but I'll give it a whirl. So, good evening, my name's Elizabeth Vanderburg, and I live at Montana and Lincoln Boulevards. I'd like to talk a little bit about the history. I totally agree we're a progressive city, but I think we also have a lot of history. In the 60s and 70s, several high-rises were built in the city of Santa Monica. As you all well know, there's a 300-foot-tall office building at 100 Wilshire, the twin 17-story Santa Monica shores on ocean, and I walk by it today, the 13-story Bank Plaza at Fortham Wilshire. It was the Ocean Park Development Project in the 1960s, was called for 14 towers, which each nearly 20 stories, along the ocean that mobilized the community. Residents organized against the idea of building up. The community did not want the height. This precedent of community input continued to the 1980s, with the 1984 general plan restricting building heights in our 8.3-square-mile city, a small city but a strong city, to three to seven stories, depending on the city location. Ocean Avenue in particular has been a specific focus of city residents. Access to the ocean air, light, and views with an everyman sense of ownership to it. I didn't come into town and drive all the way down Wilshire when I came in here, but I certainly did walk to the edge of Palisades Park and go, "I get to live here." With the evolution of the downtown-specific plan in 2013, the residents continued to look to live in a human-scale city, one where height and density does not overwhelm our daily lives. Like the residents before us, and I expect the residents behind us, we, the residents, continue to fight for a city that is of a human scale, and that tall buildings, for many of us, represent an unraveling of the character of Santa Monica. As a resident, I support a four- to six-story height limit across the entire city, with opportunity sites being a sham to obtain density and height. I've not heard of any community benefits from the Miramar that aren't project amenities, business decisions, or required by law, or a landmark asset like the tree. It's a landmark asset, they must care for it. I know less about the Geary site, but have not heard any specific benefits that add value to residents' lives that have been proposed there either. All these community benefits, if they ever really were identified, addressed, and materialized into true benefits, are not worth the heightened density of the Miramar Geary sites. No community benefits is fine by me as long as no extreme heightened density. The opportunity sites so far are just condo development projects dressed up in Halloween costumes called hotel renovation slash building projects. I support reasonable hotel projects and reject the high-density, height condo development projects, which will probably cost the city more money to support than they will generate in significant reduced property tax revenue due to the disbandment of the redevelopment agencies by the state. Here is an example, a real example, of an appropriate character and scale on Ocean Avenue. This is a revitalized hotel on the left, the Shore Hotel, 164 rooms, that is four stories high. It respects the ocean views and scale iconic to Santa Monica by maintaining a low profile. Compared to the proposed Geary Hotel of 125 rooms, it is clear that the Geary site is a condo development project dressed up in a Frank Geary outfit. As we move forward, we anticipate our next meeting to be the, to be the Miramar EIR scoping meeting, which I've been involved in that process, and I would like to pose a question to staff and Planning Commission that, one of the things I would like to know about is that we have seven opportunity sites, and there's something called cumulative effects. So that would be the cumulative effects of traffic, parking, circulation, air quality, all the other things that you can imagine in the CEQA for the EIR. How do we understand the cumulative effects of all these opportunity sites, and how do we judge those and understand those? Because right now, it looks to me like the EIRs are going to go one by one. So I would appreciate feedback and any insight on that, and thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Alan Wall and Jerry Rubin are next. Do we have Alan Wall?
I'm...
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm not used to doing this, so wait a second. Can I get this off?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, we just need to move it so you can get the camera.
Ah. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say that I am so grateful to all of you for holding this meeting. My neighborhood group, along with all the others, met with the planning department a month or so ago and asked for you to do this, and I love that you, that you listen to us and that you are doing it. I am a recent resident of Santa Monica, and I have to say, I feel very cool. Whenever I tell anyone I live in Santa Monica, they tell me how lucky I am. Whenever I travel anywhere in the United States and beyond, people have heard of Santa Monica, and they think that I am really lucky to live here, and I do too. I, I love Santa Monica. But one of the things that I've had trouble with as a new, a relatively new resident is what seems to me to be a complete disconnect between everything that we hear, because it sounds really reasonable and really thorough and really thoughtful, and what actually is happening. And I say that for a number of reasons. One of the things that's happening is that the city council just approved the Village Trailer Park. I mean, it is the most crazy-looking thing compared to what we're saying we want to have. The other thing that makes me confused is that we are, and people have said this before, that we are looking at these hotels separate from the downtown-specific plan. It doesn't make any sense to me that we're going through all this work, and yet we are piecemealing and approving things that are not a subject to the downtown-specific plan. I had something I wanted to read, and it's going to be at the end a question for all of you. I was recently given a report that was commissioned by the city and its planning consultant, Tordi Galis, to provide a third-party real estate outlook for Santa Monica, for downtown Santa Monica. The report states, "The city will utilize the conclusions in the analysis to inform the city's update of its specific plan and to consider when establishing the development potential of opportunity sites within downtown." What is striking in the report is that the consultant was directed to assume an unconstrained development environment. The tone throughout the report was how to maximize real estate values, with only one mention of us, the residents. That mention was to say how important it was to have local shoppers, because, quote, "Their presence provides a sense of authenticity..." "...that becomes a draw for outside visitors looking to experience the Santa Monica lifestyle." To me, this sounds like we are props in a pretend cool place to live. My question is, how is this report being used by the city with respect to the specific plan and the opportunity sites, and more specifically, how are you integrating it with the loose? I don't necessarily expect an answer right now, but I, this is, this is troubling. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Jerry Rubin is next up. Go ahead. Yeah, okay.
Jerry Rubin. My wife, Marissa, and I have been living here a long time and plan to live here the rest of our life. It's just down the way, in the Ocean Park area. I wanted to wear my "I love Santa Monica" T-shirt. I wish I had, because I think, I can't imagine, most of the people here, really, if you don't, you should be counting your blessings about how great it is to be living in Santa Monica and all the community services we get. And all I can say, there's always challenges. I go to all the meetings. I see the developers coming to the ARB meeting. They go to the Landmarks Commission meetings. It's a long public process. They go back to the drawing board. They listen to the public input. They listen to the commissioners. They come back with different plans, and they try to respect everything they're hearing from you. Now, I didn't support the RIFT initiative, and I'm glad it was defeated. And I've been getting some emails about some people are trying to recall some city council members because they're not anti-development enough. I don't think that's a real good Santa Monica city approach. Let's continue to come to meetings like this. Let's continue to hash out what we can. I'm all for substantial community benefits. I think the opportunity sites are reasonable. I saw a former planning commissioner's Frank Gruber's column in the Santa Monica Patch, and it sounded very reasonable to me. I don't think it's a bad thing, and many people here agree, that if you're going higher, that means there's going to be more open space around you. If you're going higher, you don't have to laugh, it's, you know, it's just basic logic. If you go a little bit higher and you have a workable project, like the Geary project, and you have that privately, you don't need booze. I wish we'd go back to the city council meeting where you don't applaud or boo, because it's just not a cool Santa Monica civility process, which I think we all support. I like, yeah, get a hold of yourselves, guys. We're going to all make it. I want to see a lot of trees downtown. I want to see it real pedestrian-friendly. I want to see people getting out of their cars and taking the responsibility. Don't blame the traffic on anything except ourselves for not getting on the blue bus. I'll pay your first fare if you get on the bus. Leave that car in the garage if you can occasionally. Take the freeway flyer. Gleam Davis took it downtown. I bumped into her. We had a great talk, and I commend her, and I've seen some of you. When you can, hopping on the blue bus or taking a bike. But I can tell you unequivocally that we are going to need support. If we could have a world-class museum where the Geary project is, that's fantastic. There's one word to describe that. You could use iconic, you could use everything. It's unique, his style of architecture, and that is really what Santa Monica is all about. Now, one thing I disagreed with Frank Gruber in his column, he was saying, he's not sure about the Miramar because of the style of architecture. Well, look, we all have our own favorite style of architecture, whether it be modern, whether it be this, whether it be that. To me, you support it, and even if it's not your favorite style of architecture, there's always going to be someone that says, "I wish they would have done it this way." So I'm urging Frank to just think about that bit. There was just a few other things, real quick, that I just wanted to say. I really believe that going a little bit higher, close to the beach like that, and having a museum there, and having more open space where we could have concerts and things like that for the schools, is going to be a good thing, and it's not the end of the world to go a little bit higher. So think about that in a way. It's not like we have a Manhattan skyline, and I'm not talking about opening the door for a whole thing like that. Just think about it. Hotels don't create the same traffic that other types of development does. They just don't, and the truth of the matter is, they do supply substantial community benefits. Talk about an observation deck. I would rather pay money to go up there if it's going to go and help the schools than if it were free. So don't condemn someone because they might charge a little bit of money and raise some money for the schools by having an observation deck at the Frank Geary Building. That's a good thing. That's a great thing, because the schools are going to always need that money. We are going to need it if we're going to continue getting all the services that we have grown accustomed to. If we're going to continue helping the homeless, if we're going to continue funding our schools, if we're going to continue all of the services that we expect in Santa Monica, and if they're cutting redevelopment funding, we're going to need to work together. And to just demonize development is not a real Santa Monica cool thing to do. So let's all work together, let's not think about it like what's going to happen for the next election and start planning who we're going to recall or fight already. Let's get through this process and do that collectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, some great speakers. Thank you all for your comments. Carol Landsberg, Denise Barton, and Cheryl Stetcher are the next three speakers. Do we have Carol? Denise and Cheryl, okay? Carol Landsberg?
I'm behind you.
Okay, very good. Sorry.
Thank you.
Take it away. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about a survey that one of the neighbors...
Yeah. Please allow me to explain some of my reasons why. First, I believe we all know which is a present traffic and parking nightmare downtown, which we all know bleeds into the residential streets too. Now, include all the vehicle trips from 1,000 new residential units alone to the current traffic and parking nightmare, and there's the new traffic standard for Santa Monica, considering the known net trips is not expected into 2030 and loose. My next concern would be the geographical stability of the layout. The city council's allowing all this extra weight to be put on by building bigger, especially because they seem to be doing it in an individual piece way, and I've heard nothing about the possible negative effects as a whole. Although the Miramar would be a perfect example, the... Although the Miramar would be a perfect example, the city council has a problem with fitness trainers using 45-pound weights in Palisades Park, yet they seem to have no concern with the massive weight of this monstrous development, or the stability of the block.[613.16][613.16][laughter] In ending, I feel the need to share with you, the residents, how this plan has already been stacked against you. At the Downtown Santa Monica Inc. meeting, April 25th, 2013, this is basically the instructions to check about the system given to the board by the city councilperson Gleam Davis and Assistant City Manager Lane Polachek. Get your ideas in in the next two weeks before the May 6th meeting at the Civic, continuing with when they did this, the board's opinions count more than the public's, with another board member chiming in with, "The city will listen to you and your voices, but have to go through the motions of listening to the public." And here we are. As I said before, the deck is already unstacked against the residents. Thank you.[661.29][661.29][applause]
Okay, Cheryl is next. Myera Robbins and Evelyn Lockenhauer. After that, please, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Stetcher. I'm a member of the Northeast Neighbors and I'm a 20-year resident of Santa Monica, near Franklin Street, near Wilshire. And I'm going to speak to you guys because it felt like we were kind of talking to each other there a bit and I think we're, many of us are on the same page. I want to reiterate that we'd like to see the LOUSE serve as the basis for many of your height decisions. The LOUSE was developed through a long process and that process needs to be respected. And that's where, hopefully, we'll be able to realize the LOUSE benefits that have been discussed. I'd like to see the 84-foot height limit. We'd like that human scale that the LOUSE promised. I agree with the previous speakers that the opportunity sites should be stricken from the downtown plan. Unless there are some hard parameters on that, there's just, it does not seem like a feasible way to go about developing our city. I'm delighted to hear that you are coming out with the 3D plan. That was one of the things that I was going to ask about. And I, my next question would be, when will that be available and loaded, hopefully, on the city's website so that we can all see it as well? So if you have a target date, we'd certainly love to hear that. We're taking questions, we don't get answers.[765.12][765.12][laughter] Sorry. Okay.
Is the 3D plan a rollout when it will be available as a group?
I don't, I don't... I apologize. I don't know the technology well enough to know if it's compatible with a web interface or if we would have to do something to do that. So I can't answer it now, but we can certainly look into it. I just don't know the answer technically.
Okay. And I'd also like to expand the conversation to perhaps include the consideration of parking in the downtown plan. And one of the things that we haven't talked about yet is expanding that grid to improve the freeway on and off access. I'd love to make comments on it, but I think that kind of got blown through or very quickly in the presentation. So if there's anything else that you can tell us about that that might give us a better opportunity to give input, I'd appreciate that.
Sarah?
Sure. I'm not exactly, let me try and answer the question the way I understood it. And one of the things that we're looking at when we move forward with the plan in terms of our circulation is all the different modes. As you all know, the downtown is fairly built out as it is now, which means that our opportunity to expand our roadway grid for automobiles is fairly limited. However, we do have the opportunity near the freeway to consider that, though they're big sites at the moment. I hesitate to use the word. They're called opportunity sites, but one of the opportunities that they might give us is a way to think about expanding our automobile roadway grid so that we can improve our access on and off the freeway. And that's certainly something that we're looking at. And as we move forward, we'll have more information about that.
So are you looking then at a opportunity site being a, something where a developer would then be building that extra roadway in exchange for something?
Eminent domain.
That's certainly a possibility. Like with other development agreements in the city, if developers provide improvements to the circulation system, that helps to break down those large blocks. That's something we could consider.
Okay, so if we come through it and say we're interested in improving the grid, maybe we need to put a, I would need to put a caveat on that and say, not if it's at the expense of saying that that grid improvement is coming about through development on that same site. And if we're planning on expanding the freeway access by running a road underneath some giant building, that's kind of not what I had in mind.
Right, understood.
Just to provide some...
That's a valid point. Sure, go ahead.
Just one comment. To provide some perspective, I mean, you could look at the model of the Bergamot area where roadway connections through and breaking down superblocks was a core idea. In that case, they're considered community benefits, but not associated with an opportunity site. So there still may be an 84-foot development on a site near the freeway that could provide that cut through as part of their community benefit package.
Okay, so, but just as long as, I guess, the point's made, yes, you've got one voice that's interested in improving the grid, but with the caveat that we need to look at the development. And last, I'd like to reiterate Elizabeth Vandenberg's question where she raised, "How can staff let the residents know about the cumulative impacts of all of the development that's either being proposed or is already on the books?"
That's a great question. Sarah?
There's sort of a long technical answer. I'll try and be as succinct as I can. The specific plan will have a program EIR and Francie talked about it a little bit in her presentation. So one of the things that we need to do is we need to define what the parameters of what we will study in the EIR will be currently. And we're looking again for input from this meeting and our community as we move forward to define what those parameters are. And we'll look at different scenarios and then we'll come back to the community and say, "This is what our environmental analysis said."
Yeah, and Sarah, it's true that the EIR, we're required to look at a cumulative impact analysis.
Yes, we are.
That should be part of it.
So, yes, it will be. So if there are applications in currently and at the time that we're developing our project description, we'll be having, we'll be including the applications that are in as part of our cumulative analysis. And then we'll report back to you what it says as we move forward.
So the separate EIR that's being done for the Miramar project would be also part of the downtown EIR?
When we look at individual EIR projects, those are required by state law to include cumulative projects. So everything else that's proposed has to be part of that EIR in terms of the background information. So we would do that for both the individual projects and for the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good, very good. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Appreciate it. Okay. The next speaker is Myera Robbins. Evelyn Lockenhauer, please, and Patricia Bauer. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hi, I pronounce my name Myra.
Myra, sorry.
Thanks. I too am going to face you. Thanks tonight for setting this up. It's long overdue, but deeply appreciated. My concern is the process by which development moves forward in Santa Monica. By starting this process with the developers and the city planning department, a deep bond seems to form and create an us-against-them mentality. Before it even gets to the planning commission, it feels to the residents like it's a done deal. And as the plans move forward, sometimes extremely fast, we're left with a multitude of questions and difficulty in finding straightforward answers. So I have a proposal. Before the developers even talk to the city planners, the renderings and development information must be posted in the local newspapers and information sent to all the residents in Santa Monica for their first review. And I hope that includes the planning department too. Then there's an open forum, as tonight, to ask questions, discuss the issues, zoning, so-called community benefits, and hopefully either get some concrete answers or at minimum give the city planning department and residents the ideas and concerns to which we create a viable plan for further, to further discuss. It's extremely important to grow our city compatible with the LOUSE philosophy of what makes a livable city. We who live here and use all the services one desperately to preserve the vibrant beach-town atmosphere. The next step would be a presentation to the planning commission, at which time the residents can hear what the city planners have heard and translated into a possible development. This information, this information would also have to be posted in the newspapers and emails ahead of the meeting. Resident input is necessary at this time. From here, it would go back and forth with forums and commission meetings to determine the outcome. This is not only about the Miramar plans, but also about these so-called opportunity sites that we feel we've been deceived by. In yesterday's LA Times, front page was an article on Michael Dell's corporation and how it avoids certain taxes. We already know that the original development agreement called for renovation, not condos. And we're well aware that the reason for the condos is a quick way to recoup the original investment. Same with the Geary Project. Is this going to benefit us or add more congestion and violate the beach-town atmosphere? And two weeks ago, there was an op-ed in the New York Times by the world-renowned architect Robert Stern, who designed the Santa Monica UCLA Medical Center on Wilshire. He raised the question of, "Shouldn't we build the infrastructure before we build the buildings?" It seems like we might want to ask those questions.[1265.14][1265.14][applause]
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Myra. Okay, Evelyn is the next speaker, followed by Patricia Bauer, and then we have Walt Haybark. Okay, go ahead, Evelyn.
Hi, thank you also for having us, giving us this opportunity to speak here tonight. I am a Santa Monica native. I'm a real estate agent and a local agent in Santa Monica. And I have clients that I work with that find it difficult to get into the city. They're concerned about parking. They would rather meet somewhere else than to come into Santa Monica. I think back on the old days, growing up in Santa Monica in the Third Street Promenade when it was Santa Monica Mall and how easy it was to get around town. The way I understand it, that since 1984, most of downtown is zoned between Second and Fifth Streets for about three to six-story buildings. And I'd like to see that continue, maybe go up to 84 feet, which is, what, eight stories in some areas? But that should also, I think, should apply to the community sites as well, not just for certain areas, but for all of the community sites should be limited to 84 feet. And I think that would make a big difference for the way we live in the, and the way we live and commute throughout Santa Monica. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Patricia?
Hi. Am I ringing? Hi, I'm Patricia Bauer and I also want to say thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight and have this forum. I think it's long overdue. I wanted to talk a little bit about what kind of city we all want to have. When my husband and I first moved here back in 1985, we did what anybody would do. We drove up and down Wilshire Boulevard so that we could get a sense of where we'd come and what the city was all about. What we found was a wonderful place, a low-slung place with a human scale downtown, as it still exists today. Our tallest building is 100 Wilshire, which is 21 stories high, but almost everything else that we saw was four stories or less. Now we're in the midst of this great discussion about the so-called opportunity sites with unlimited height and density as they're proposed now. If we were to go forward with that plan, we would, first and foremost, we'd have eight buildings as tall or taller than 100 Wilshire, to say nothing of the square footage. One that we know about, the proposed Miramar, would have more square footage than the Santa Monica Place Mall, which is just unimaginable to me. And we can be sure that these eight would only be the beginning because they would open the door to lots more. With the tall and dense development on these sites, our city would go from being the small-scale, family-friendly residential community with a moderately-sized commercial district to becoming, yes, the next Miami Beach. Tall, dense, congested, even more crowded. I have yet to meet, maybe there are some tonight and we'll hear from them, but I have yet to meet a resident who says, "Oh, boy, this is great. An opportunity to have lots of skyscrapers in Santa Monica." Instead, people are angry and they're angry for mostly two reasons. First, the city has not come forward and asked the residents if this is the kind of city that we want. Instead, this consideration of greater height and density has been happening far from the public view. It was not, as has been said before, included in the LOUSE document. And if I had more hands, I would bring mine. It weighs four pounds. I didn't think I wanted to bring it up. But nowhere in those four pounds does it say, "Opportunity sites in the downtown can be 21 stories or unlimited height and density." Second, to the extent that residents are getting a sense of the city's plans for opportunity sites, we don't want them. It was assumed, I think, it was assumed that reasonable people, residents, would want greater height and density, but it turns, in the downtown, but it turns out that we don't. Before we talk about community benefits and everybody's wish lists, I think it's important that we talk about what kind of community we want. Because talking about community benefits before we determine what kind of community we want is tantamount to saying, "How can we pay off everybody so that everybody thinks they got something?" Community benefits, considered that way, are a sham cynically named and designed to divide and conquer. Give everybody a bauble on the Christmas tree and everybody will salute. Well, I think that we are too engaged in the process to go for that sort of thing. The LOUSE promises a vision of a human-scale beach town. We residents support that vision and support the preservation of the character and the scale and the spirit of our downtown, where almost all the buildings are four stories or less and there's plenty of sunlight and the sea air blows through. One 100 Wilshire is more than enough. Thank you.[1600.33][1600.33][applause]
Okay. Thank you, Patricia. Walt Haybark, Miriam Ginsburg, and Linda Saffon are next. Walt, Miriam Ginsburg, and Linda?
I'm Miriam Ginsburg.
Okay, why don't you come on up here, Miriam? Come on. I can't read the last name, but Haybark on Apptia Way. Anyway, so here we go. Miriam.
My name is Miriam Ginsburg. The continuing growth will make this city completely unlivable. The continuing growth of this city affects us all. Take it back, I wrote an article at the Press, City, you know, Daily Press. On two occasions, I had tourists ask me where the beach was. We were standing in the middle of the Third Street Promenade.[1663.95][1663.95][laughter] This is a town with a beach in front of it. It is no longer a beach town. The warmth and the charm is gone, replaced with the cold, sterile architectural, concrete fixtures and orchestrated amenities to attract tourists whilst taking the town away from the residents, overcrowding. How about a recall at City Hall to kick the bums out who side with the large development agreements whilst giving us very little in exchange besides traffic, gridlock, noise, pollution, no stop, air traffic, three signs to read on any post before you park your car?[1715.83][1715.83][laughter] Expensive parking if you can even find a place to park and lots and lots of tickets. This has become a quality-of-life issue. I've lived in Ocean Park area, Santa Monica, since 1948. I say, "Let's organize a march to City Hall. Get residents and news cameras out there. Residents, let's take Santa Monica back." It sounds, it sounds like a war zone outside of my house, my window. I live on an incline on Fourth and Ocean Park Boulevard, on the incline. The buses, my house shook, and the planes, I hear them coming through the roof. So I spent over $100,000 of my retirement money I'm going through so that I can stay in Santa Monica. And you know what? When they were building that road there, it tore the foundation out of my house, the bottom. I mean, I don't say I blame Santa Monica. I had to upgrade my house, but I have a lot of blame for Santa Monica. And it sounds like a war zone outside of my window. Trump wins in New York and now everyone is looking at a side, at the side of a building. Hello, Manhattan. Goodbye, Santa Monica. The loose and the goose share one thing... The loose and the goose share one thing in common: they both lay eggs. My dad was a barber on Main Street for 31 years until they tripled his rent and he was automatically retired. That's how we treat small businesses in Santa Monica. And after he died, they honored him at City Hall. Meanwhile, he gets kicked out of his place of business because they tripled it. A lot of businesses don't stay here long, people. If you want to invest in Santa Monica and you have a small business, God bless you. I hope you do well, but I don't trust this city anymore. I'm sorry, I've been here too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Miriam. We have lots more to go, so Linda Saffon, Valerie Hiss, and Brenda Weisman. Sorry again for any mispronunciations. Linda?
This is really spontaneous on my part. I think, I've been here pretty long. I came from Michigan as a 10-year-old kid down Santa Monica Boulevard on Route 66, which was a really cool thing, and I saw that pier at the end of the line, and it was really thrilling to sort of enter through a place of the city. I lived in an apartment on Harvard as a little kid, four kids in a three-bedroom apartment. My father was a carpenter. He was all over the city, very involved in the church, all sorts of things. I lived here as a young person on 16th Street and various other apartments down on Ocean Avenue, and always came back to the city. I went away and I came back, and I saw it from the time I was 10 years old. I lived near the smoke shop that I didn't used to mind smoke when I was a kid, and now I can't stand to go near the smoke shop. But I now live north of Montana, and I'm a member of Noma, and I just automatically support being, understanding that this city is really, really a treasure, and it really is like, something like, a thing of beauty is a joy forever. You have to protect this city. You have to make sure that the next time you come to one of these meetings, that you bring 20 friends, because we really need to be heard. I love this city. I love how it was when I was 10. I love how it is now. I saw, I saw the promenade before. It was the promenade. My kids went to school here. It is 53 years I've looked at this city. And right now, I just want to say one thing. So I came back sometime, I think from college time, driving back down Wilshire Boulevard this time, and I'm somewhere in my mid-20s, and I go, wasn't that great when the pier, they almost tore the pier, you know, they almost tore the pier down in the 70s? I was a young person, and I wrote letters to save the pier because I liked the merry-go-round. There's always going to be somebody doing something to screw a really nice place up. But I drove down Wilshire Boulevard somewhere like my mid-20s, and I honestly don't know when they put that 100 Wilshire building up. But my God, we got to about, you know, maybe 17th Street or 14th Street, and we went, whoa, when did that come up? What's that? You know, when did that start? And we started laughing, and they called it the phone building, and you could put a big receiver up on it like Altenberg, and you could make a sculpture out of it. But I remember before that 100 building was there. And if you look at that just separately, you can see how tall that is. And that got in the way of seeing the old statue and the garden and the gateway to Santa Monica, let alone that the gateway to the Santa Monica Pier is long gone because of the density and the height and everything around it. I love the growth. I love things changing. I think it's beautiful. I love, love, love this city. It is a treasure, but you really have to listen to the residents, and you can't overbuild it anymore. It's already been going on so much. And this is just in an emotional comment, but I agree with all the other people that said it specifically about height requirements and density.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Valerie Hiss, Brenda Weisman, and Hank Conig. Here we go. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Valerie, and I think that everybody was so well-prepared tonight. I want to thank you for saying everything I wanted to say. I have a couple more things to say. Mine's more emotional than prepared, but I've lived here all my life. I went to school here when I was a young kid. I went to college here. I work here. I own a home here. I don't want to move away, but this weekend I was down on the promenade. I couldn't find a place to park. As I was walking across the street, there were so many people, the density was incredible. A big red bus came by that's now extended itself twice the size that it used to be. Then there was a big blue bus. I almost got hit by a bicycle rider, and it's become an incredible outrage of the density without even thinking about what you're proposing to do. So all I can say is we have a huge problem right now. We need to deal with the problem that we have right in front of us with all of the traffic that's been created. I'm not against, I'm not against change, I'm really not. I love some of the things that have been done, and I don't want to be living in a promenade that was the way I was, the way it was when I was 10, because it was very sleepy and nothing was going on. So I love what's happening, but it's just gone too far, and we need to stop and take care of what we've already created. It's, it's a huge problem, and it's filthy out there. If any of you look at the streets, it's filthy. Who's going to take care of that? Who's going to clean the streets? They should be power washed. That's not happening. I just see more cigarette butts, more people throwing Starbucks coffee mugs and paper cups and Pinkberry cups, and I live on a lovely street that's being destroyed by people coming down it and throwing their trash just indiscriminately. We have huge problems. Let's not create more. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Let's see, Brenda?
Brenda Weisman.
Yes, okay. And then after Brenda, we have Hank Conig, Andrew Hoyer, and Michael Feinstein. Okay.
Hi, I'm Brenda Weisman, and I live in the neighborhood. And speaking also to the opportunity site issue, we know the Miramar has released its plans for its massive expansion so that we can no longer pretend that the discussion of the opportunity site at the Miramar site is merely hypothetical. The Miramar's proposed plans are completely at a scale with the surrounding neighborhood. We now know the hotel intends to build a massive skyscraper on the site. The structure would blow right through the height and density limits imposed under the zoning ordinance. The downtown-specific plan should not allow this amount of overdevelopment on that site, especially since it is supposed to provide a transition into the adjacent neighborhoods. The planning department should impose reasonable height and density limits on the opportunity sites in this specific plan and not allow developers to create their own standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hank. Is Hank? Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, hello. My name's Hank Conig, and despite my accent, I've been a resident for 33 years, and I raised a couple of kids here, went to Santa Monica High School. They both live in San Francisco. They love it. Couple of words that I haven't heard tonight mentioned, one was diversity. That's what they love about San Francisco. Another one is environmental responsibility. They don't have cars in San Francisco. It's an expensive city to live in, but they don't need a car. That saves them a lot of money. Transportation's fantastic. Now, the low beach side, beachside model of housing is not a particularly good, sustainable model. In fact, there are those who argue that Manhattan, the people in Manhattan have a lower environmental footprint, carbon footprint. But loose addressed this issue, because loose said, let's preserve the residential neighborhoods, and let's do change, let's have development occur in 4% of the city. It's along the boulevards and the downtown. So if you take the downtown area of that, that's about quarter of that area, so we're talking 1% of the city. And then if you say, well, look, there are a lot of buildings that have already been built, they're not going to get redeveloped, that's about half of them. So we're really talking about 0.5% of the city. That's what we're talking about. What we're talking about in the specific plan is not spilling out into the residential neighborhoods. It's not going to change that wonderful beachside character, but what it is going to do, it's allowing growth to occur when it can be environmentally sustainable, because we have the expo coming. Now, somebody said, Bob Stern, I know Bob, "Infrastructure should come before buildings." Well, that didn't work for the subway to the sea, which is going to be renamed the subway not quite to the sea, because it's going to stop at the Veterans, because there's not enough density here to sustain it. Now, we have, we, okay? That's fine, grown if you want, I'm just going to share some facts, but we have expo coming, 2016, so the projects that people are talking about are going to come online when that's in place. So in this, in that context, we do have the infrastructure coming. Somebody mentioned it was dirty, the last speaker, I think. Residents only pay 80 cents of a dollar that the city pays in services. So that comes from, where does the rest of the money come from, especially without CO2 many? It comes from the hotels, it comes from sales tax for cars, et cetera, et cetera. So we do need some businesses. There was talk about a huge expansion of growth. Now, it's kind of interesting, because Francie said that there's no new office buildings in downtown in two decades, so we don't have office use down here as an expansion of growth. If we look at the census, the population of Santa Monica has not increased in the last two decades. So who's generating all this traffic? Where's it coming from? It's not from the development we have here, because it's not bringing more people, and people drive the cars, right? Okay, so where does that come from? It's coming from outside. It's coming from people coming through our city. It's coming from the people who want to enjoy the promenade, who help pay that 20% differential, who come to the beach. And I know one time Jerry argued that the best way to solve traffic is to basically shut down the promenade and shut down the beach, but I don't think that's such a great idea. Now, there was a slide up here of the Shores Hotel and Frank Gehry's Hotel. Now, the Shores is, I think, four stories. Frank's is 20 stories. But let's look at the building area. The Shores Hotel is an FAR of two, and the Frank Gehry project was 2.6. It's only 30% larger. So that would be the same as saying, if it was three stories, they could go four. It just happens to be squeezed tight. I mentioned diversity. Again, that's architectural diversity, saying we can have tall people and short people. We can have tall buildings, and it doesn't mean they're necessarily any bigger, okay? It's only 30, and that, actually 2.6, is within what's in the current zone when you take the housing density discount, okay? So I think it's important that when we, we start connecting the things, we need to look at, what is the cause and effect of things? Sometimes we sort of have a gut reaction. The one I always hear is, we have too much traffic and not enough parking. But if we're actually using the parking, we're generating traffic. So what we really need is, we need the ability to have people in the downtown, in that 0.0, 0.5% of the land that's developable, to create what the loose envisage. And I'm really pleased that a lot of people talk positively about the policies of loose. Somewhere where people can live, just like my sons do in San Francisco, where they can walk to a supermarket, they can ride their bike to work or take the train, et cetera. That's what we want to create, and it's a different environment to being out north of Montana or Sunset Park or east, east Santa Monica where I live. It's a place that will appeal to young people to come back, my sons, to be able to come back and afford to live here, because you won't be dependent upon the auto. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Andy Hoyer, Michael Feinstein, and Louise Steiner.
Hi, my name is Andrew Hoyer. I am currently the president of Santa Monica Mid-City Neighbors, Neighborhood, Community Neighborhood Association. Tonight I speak for myself, and I'm not here to speak to you, so I'm going to turn my back, and I'm here to speak to the planning commission. I have a few comments, mostly everything that's been said about height I agree with. I don't think we need anything over 84 feet. I'm comfortable with 84 feet being in those opportunity sites as well. My comment tonight is going to be on a little bit different topic. Now that we're all aware that Mr. Michael Dell has managed to avoid paying $1 million in property taxes every year, I think it is imperative that Santa Monica express its displeasure. Those taxes are collected by the state and distributed to municipalities to be used for schools, roads, sewers, police, and firemen, et cetera. When a commercial property owner manipulates the system, it shifts that burden from their pocketbook to the homeowners. With that in mind, I would like to see the city stand up to this nefarious greed and demand that Mr. Dell commit to providing $1 million in community benefits on an annual basis before they'll even consider looking at his DA. Santa Monica needs to set the standard for dealing with malfeasance of this sort. It is obvious that his plans for the Miramar site will have significant impact on our infrastructure. If this causes him to decide not to do anything with the property, terrible. I'm terribly upset that I won't get to stare at this really old tree. I love trees. I climb them all the time. Back to my point, as planning commissioners, you are the front line in our defense against those who want to come and pillage our community of its resources. It is up to you to set the tone for those that come before you requesting a DA. If the process of getting a DA becomes onerous enough, perhaps the rising tide of DAs will begin to ebb, and all our lives will be measurably improved. Thank you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay? Michael?
Hey. So Santa Monica resident since, Ocean Park since 1984, Mike Feinstein, and privileged to be on your city council for some of those years. It's obviously within our right to set the heights for this community as residents through our elected officials to decide how high we want. At the same time, I think there is an intellectually fair debate about how much height do you trade off for ground-level design? And from an urban planning standpoint, yes, you can get better development on the ground floor if you're willing to take some extra height. So in that debate, I think a lot of what we're hearing now is being just couched in that debate and only within those parameters, but there's some key values I think we're missing, and that's why I wanted to speak. First, from the beach, the 3D modeling that we're getting, the one that I saw that you guys had put up, is from the sky. How many of you are beach people here? Okay? Right on, Santa Monica Beach. So I'm down there a lot at the water's edge. When I look back up at the buffs, at the palisades, that's the perspective that matters to me, not if I'm in a helicopter looking down on the city. So I really am concerned that with the projects at the Miramar and the Gehry Building, that we would get to a point of no return with our whole street front there if we allow those two things to pop way up. And the view from the ground at the beach, you know, for me, that's personally, as a resident, is wrong. And I think that we need to be looking at those views, not just from the sky, because that's who we are, and that's who the visitors are who come here. Number two, I'm really concerned that we're selling the sky to luxury box development. And this idea that we have to take condos for anything to happen in this dynamic of height versus ground floor quality is wrong. It's like the Gehry Building, the top 11 floors in that proposal are condominiums that cost $3 to $5 million. Should we really be selling our skyline and our views to the 1%? I don't think that Santa Monica is so desperate that the only way we can get good building design is accepting that. And this is a 20-year plan. The first pretty girl or pretty boy that smiles at us, we're going to go off with them because they've got a nice shiny building? So I think we really have to look at it from that sort of dynamic about if we are going to take any extra height in these sites at all. And I think it's fair to have the debate, and I don't even blame the developers for coming and trying to influence the debate by sending something in before it's appropriate. That's fine, because if nobody sent in anything, we'd just be saying intellectually, well, this is just a theory, but we have to see something of substance so we can see what it really means. I don't have a problem with that, but I think we really need to debate, do we have to sell our views to just, you know... But, I think we really need to debate, do we have to sell our views to just, you know, people who make three to five million dollars? Aren't there other ways of getting better development? And we, we have to continually hit that home. That changes the demographics of neighborhoods, that changes the demographics of uses with the type of people who stay in different areas. When we think about what we did along the beachfront with the RBC zone years ago, we wanted to continue to keep a mix of visitor, commercial, and existing residents. Stephanie Barbinell Street, other folks. We wanted to do that to have a multi-class area because a multi-class dynamic promotes multi-class uses of public spaces. And that's who we've been about for a long time. And if we just sell the sky to three to five million dollar condos, we're changing the demographics in an area along our beachfront that I think is entirely inappropriate. Finally, in terms of any place where I would be more comfortable taking height, I think the city project between Fourth and Fifth at Arizona, which is in the middle, that's a place where if we're going to have the ground floor skating rink, for example, and if we want other dynamics to happen down there, that's a place where we could take a little bit more height and we wouldn't see it from anywhere because it'd be in the middle. We have to be also, in addition to the 3D from the beach, we need to have it from New Tongva Park as well. When you're sitting there in this new gorgeous world-class park we're going to have, what's the view going to be like that way? And for the folks who are representing the Holiday Inn, if we're going to get a community benefit there for some more height, I want to cover the freeway. We've been talking about covering the freeway since we've been planning the civic center for a long time. And we're supposed to be getting more park in that plan in the long run. The only reason I can see to redevelop that is to take, you know, and having them offer that. The final thing I want to say about these condo prices. When you do the Gehry building, if you just take those eleven floors and these three to five million dollar condos, just by itself, that money pays for the whole project. Which means the hotels are a cash cow kachink, you know, there's no risk. The public benefit, I mean, there's no risk. The benefit is we're selling the sky, giving the developers all the, the money upfront through selling those condos. They have no risk for the project and so we're getting a little bit more hotel money. To me, that's, it just doesn't work. So, those are the two main things, beach and frankly, an economic class analysis of who we're selling our public views to for the next hundred years. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Michael. We have Louise Steiner, after that Natalia Zerneskaya, and Larry Dietz. Louise?
Good evening, my name is Louise. I've lived here thirty-seven years. And I'd like to remind the citizens of Santa Monica that our city motto is happy people make the happy city. And I don't think there's a lot of happy citizens at the moment. In fact, I would even like to see a show of hands of everybody in the audience who isn't happy about what's going on in the city at this time. If you could pan out. Thank you, yes. So, let me put my spectacles on. Okay. Yes, well, having lived here for thirty-seven years, I've seen a lot of changes. But, recently, the accelerated rate of tearing down, the tearing down of Santa Monica is unprecedented. It looks like a war zone everywhere you go. The new architecture is very anonymous looking and that's being kind. On every corner downtown, a chain restaurant or a restaurant, a chain store or restaurant is there. Every day, I see a mom and pop store go out of business and yet another chain come in. We are becoming very clo, we are very, we, excuse me, we are very close...
Santa Monica, but I live in, I can't believe it's not Santa Monica at Pico and Bundy. And I've actually been trying to move into Santa Monica for the past two and a half years when I moved to LA because I work in Santa Monica, I do all my volunteer projects in Santa Monica. I freaking love this city. And I'm sure everyone agrees with me in this room, right? It's the most amazing city in the world. And I honestly think that the opportunity sites are a really great idea. Just because for me, the challenge in trying to move into Santa Monica has been the cost and the opportunity of jobs. And I think that the opportunity sites would be better named giving sites because they're going to give back to our community. They're going to give us revenue and tax dollars, they're going to give us community benefits, they're going to give us more job opportunities, more housing. And I honestly think that they're a great idea. And I just want to thank the commission for bringing us these opportunities and these plans and then allowing us to put our input in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Larry Dietz, Carl Hansen, and Ruth Ann Layer. Do we have Larry? How about Carl Hansen? Okay, come on up, and Ruth Ann Layer?
I'm here.
Okay. Would you like to go next? Oh, okay, well, here's Carl.
Larry, not here?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, city staff and planning commissioners and neighbors. I'm Carl Hansen, I'm Director of Government Affairs for the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce, but I'm also a resident in Santa Monica. I live just outside of downtown Wilmau. I walk to work at the chamber and shop here and dine here and love this city and understand, you know, a, a lot of the concern right now. But, I, I also think there, there needs to be a discussion and I'm, I'm happy we have the opportunity to, to have that tonight. The, the chamber submitted a letter to the planning commission at the end of April regarding our concerns and, and recommendations on the downtown specific plan. And I'd like to highlight a few of those points this evening. First off, the loose does preserve, as Hank mentioned, ninety-six percent of the city. And rightly identifies downtown as, as one of the few places where appropriate new development is encouraged. Because the, because of the transit options available here, both those currently in place and those that are coming, the expo line. And because the downtown has the greatest concentration of activity in the city. And for myself and my friends that live here, we're really excited about that. And the, the promise of the loose that it envisions for the future of the downtown is, is really, really thrilling. On the opportunity site issue, I mean, there's, there's only eight of these. This represents a very small portion of, of the city. And these sites are essential to downtown's ongoing revitalization. They're strategically located, they provide extraordinary opportunity for community benefits that justify flexibility with respect to height and density. And, and let me be clear, no one is asking for unlimited height and density. No one's asking for this blank slate that's set and there's a lot of misinformation that's going around. What, what's being asked is flexibility. The city should establish heightened density limits for these sites on a site-specific basis when considering proposals for development and project-specific community benefits. The DSP should not, the downtown specific plan should not set arbitrary height and density standards for these sites. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl, Ruth Ann?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to shift the discussion just a little bit. I'm a member of the Landmarks Commission and also on the board of the Santa Monica Conservancy. I'm also on the board of Northeast Neighbors and have been a resident here for thirty-six years. And of course, like everybody, love Santa Monica. One of the things we think a lot about and care a lot about in the downtown plan is the character of the city. And where that begins for me is the historic resources that we have downtown. And I want to shine a spotlight on that because this is a core value that I really think we need to be sure plays a very prominent place in the downtown plan. When we think about downtown and experience the historic buildings, the entire history of the city, our roots, our beginnings, our development, all of that is reflected in the buildings that we have downtown. We need to nourish that and make that part of our future. I also think that we have to consider some of the incentives that we need to provide to allow these buildings to flourish as economically and financially viable entities with adaptive reuse and changing needs. We need to have new uses coming into these buildings. And so, we need to be sure that we're providing incentives for that in terms of development standards and code issues and so on. I want to encourage everybody here to become more familiar with these buildings by going on the Santa Monica Conservancy Downtown Walking Tour. Please forgive the commercial, but too few people know about this and how you can really understand Santa Monica. Every Saturday morning at ten, the Conservancy offers downtown tours that leave from the Hustling International. One of the things I wanted to, to mention is the issue of scale. To me, looking at the character of the buildings and the scale of the historic buildings, which are mostly one, two, three stories high, the higher the permitted density that zoning would allow, the more threatened the survival of these buildings becomes. And I think we have to, we really have to be cognizant of a balance between conserving the buildings and allowing new development. To me, in my mind, compatible development for new buildings is four, five, six stories at the max, consistent across downtown. I'd also like to suggest that the promenade, which is, as you know, a very successful model of a vibrant downtown core pedestrian zone and a lot of activity, that that be considered as a potential conservation district. The Burgomot Area Plan has two conservation districts identified. And the downtown is extremely successful but could be fragile. If we have eighty-four foot high permitted buildings there, we may lose our promenade. And so, I'd like to see that that be considered to be potential conservation district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're working through the stat, we're probably about halfway through, so hang in there. We have a lot more to go. I really appreciate all of your comments and the tone here and the open atmosphere, we'd like to keep that going. So, Robert Gerfield, David Rogers, Britt Allright, I'm sure, sorry, I'm not pronouncing that name right on Wadsworth Avenue. So, Robert Gerfield is next.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I've been a resident of Santa Monica for forty-eight years. I've been a resident of Santa Monica for forty-eight years. In two thousand and six, I purchased my two-bedroom, fifteen-hundred-square-foot Beach Ocean View condo at eleven eighteen Third Street. Before opening escrow, I was assured by city planning that the height limit for new construction between my condo and Ocean Avenue was forty-five feet. Later that year, Michael Dell bought the Miramar Hotel. Six weeks ago, I sold this condo and took a two-hundred-thousand-dollar loss due to the uncertainty among prospective buyers of the proposed Miramar's two-hundred-sixty-foot-high hotel condo, affecting the views and the neighborhood congestion. If my experience is a harbinger of the decline in value of the commercial and residential units in the blocks near the Miramar, then even the net financial benefit to the local agencies from property taxes is threatened by this development as the value of all these buildings decreases and the proportional property tax goes down. The city appears to be willing to negotiate away height restrictions and density limits that have been enforced for decades in exchange for the prospect of increased tax revenue from high-rise hotel development along Ocean Avenue, as well as increased density and height at the other opportunity sites. But, these benefits, even if we grant these development agreements, are not guaranteed. We read in the LA Times yesterday that the Miramar sued to avoid paying full amount of property tax because of a loophole in Proposition thirteen. Other developers will also use loopholes to avoid paying their share. What makes you think that the benefits and tax revenues under discussion will actually be realized by this city if this and other outsized projects ever get built? My request to you, planning commission and city council, is please enforce the existing zoning height and density limits in effect now on Santa Monica's downtown.
Thank you very much. David Rogers and Britt of Wadsworth Avenue is next, okay.
Good evening, my name is David Rogers. I'm an architect, building and designing here in Santa Monica. Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to chat with you for a brief time this evening. I think that Jerry Rubens and Hank Konig have really summarized a lot of the issues here tonight very reasonably, very logically. And, and, and I'm, I'm really humbled by, by their breadth of understanding of what the real issues are here tonight. I think that when we saw the, when we saw the development of the plan and really listened to those words, what we heard was, was a serious, professional approach to working out a variety of opportunities within the city itself. And it's been very carefully done and graphically done. And if you look at that, you understand exactly what they're about. And that variety and diversity Hank mentioned is exactly what makes great cities, great cities. The variety of spaces and heights and tight spaces, open spaces. We travel all over the world doing our work and have for forty years. And truly, Santa Monica is, is the most interesting place I've ever been simply because its, its, its weather, its sun, its shadow, and just the general atmosphere here is, is unprecedented. There's no place else like it in the world. Now, what I'm interested in addressing tonight is how to continue the generation of that variety. The, and you know, I presume you know where this is going. I think the, the opportunity sites are, are something that we, we should consider and we should consider very carefully. And, and we're not going to do that tonight because we don't have all the facts in our hands. Once, I, I just really ask you all to have, have a, to let us have an opportunity to go over the, the opportunity site and, and actually figure out what they are. We know a little bit about what Gary's, Frank, Mr. Gary, is proposing. But, but there's, there's, if there's eight, I thought there were nine, but there's at least seven more that we need to look at. But, before we condemn them to death, let's, let's look at what kind of variety and opportunity that offers the city, not only in architectural reasons, but for tax purposes for, and, and all the, all the reasons that taxes are a good thing because they, they allow us to have all the other things in the city we want, from cleaning up, cleaning up our city to, to schools and parks, et cetera. So, I, all I, all I'm trying to get, get around to is let's be reasonable at the moment, look at the opportunity slides, look at the variety of the city and before we rush to judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Britt, okay, thank you. And then Evelyn Salem and Brian Beretta after that.
Thank you, Britt Allcroft. Well, my neighbor, Michael Feinstein, said quite a lot of what I would have said and he would say it much better than me anyway. But, to me, all this development and the excuses for carrying on with it equates a bit like filling a bathtub and not turning the tap off and shutting the bathroom door and all the water flows over and everything gets destroyed or seriously damaged. And if you happen to have a cat who likes the bathroom, like I do, then they're dead. So, which would be heartbreaking as it is. And that's what I feel about Santa Monica, I adore Santa Monica. And I fell in love with it seventeen years ago and moved everything here. And it has this, still, just this wonderful balance and harmony and the fact that you can have your feet in the water and you see the mountains. And you don't have to have a lot of money, you didn't, to live here. And you could have a cup of coffee with someone who had no money at all and have a wonderful conversation. And I really fear that that is, and I know from personal experience that is changing. And it's got to stop, it's got to stop. And it is outrageous to say that as residents, we're not stakeholders. I moved my family, my life here. We planted trees and bushes and we have a wonderful array of birds who come nesting. That's all about being a stakeholder. And heavens knows it, and the great mystery does, we pay taxes. So, don't tell us we are not stakeholders. And don't tell us, I'm sorry, this is a personal view that I, no, I'm not sorry. I have a personal view because I know quite a lot about the corporate world. And this is a lot about greed. And it's got to stop and we can stop it.
Thank you. Evelyn Salem, and then Brian Beretta after that.
My name is Evelyn Salem. My family has lived in northeast Santa Monica since 1979. We were attracted to live here because Santa Monica is unique in having a livable beach-town atmosphere. My concern and confusion are, first, that no specific plans have been presented for preserving this atmosphere, and, second, that no detailed plan has been presented for infrastructure for city services, safety, transportation, traffic, environmental and pollution concerns, and emergency and disaster, even at the most limited heights and densities proposed, in totality, rather than piecemeal. We are already at saturation point in traffic and density, especially along the promenade. My request and my plea here is that these discussions be stopped, stopped, until realtime, economically feasible, workable, unified plans for instant infrastructure are put in place before these discussions can even proceed. Any comment or opinion has to be framed by what the city can reasonably accomplish to provide for preserving the beach-town atmosphere and keeping our city safe and livable and sustainable. Then we can make informed decisions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So Brian Beretta, and then is it Lauren Poling? Or, sorry, I will check my reading here. Brian?
Hello. Wow, that was loud. My name is Brian Beretta. I've been a citizen, a resident for about seven years, and like everybody else in this room, I love the city. I'm excited about it. I'm excited about this project, to be honest. Let me just first state, I don't understand the, I'm just confused about the people feeling like they haven't been involved. I've been to every one of these meetings. I felt city staff and other involved individuals have been really accessible. To be honest, most of these meetings wouldn't fill a quarter of this room, so that's a little frustrating. But since I moved to Santa Monica, I've never felt more involved in local city issues than I, you know, than ever before. I've gone to multiple projects and, you know, plans and bike plan, pedestrian plan, and Bergamot area plan, and it's been really exciting, and I feel it's been really inviting, more so than ever before in any other city I've been in, so I'd like to say kudos to the city for that. But back to this plan. Like I said, nothing's been decided yet. There's, I feel like there's a lot of animosity going on, and I think we're just kicking out ideas right now, and ideas are exciting and they're cool, and there's a lot of really neat stuff going on in the world right now. We have a real chance to, you know, to shape the future of this city. The world's changing, and we're realizing that the, you know, the ideas of urban planning and design and transportation over the last fifty years just don't, they're not working, and they're not going to work for the future if we keep doing them. So we need to, we need to change the way we think, we need to change the way we do things. And there's a lot of really cool, exciting, innovative ideas coming out around urban design and planning and just urban space and transportation. And now's our chance to really take some of those ideas and run with them and, you know, really kind of cement the, the attitude of the city as one of forward-thinking. And, you know, we've, we've got a responsibility to keep the city around and to build a legacy for future generations. And, you know, I hear sleepy beach town mentioned a lot. And I don't think it's been a sleepy beach town for a long time, and to be honest, I don't think it ever will be again. But I think the characteristics that people love about a sleepy beach town, such as walkability and sense of place and community, those are still achievable and those still exist. It's just, we're going to get to them a different way. And, and we need to be open to the ideas that are being thrown out, and we need to, you know, at least listen without, you know, jumping on them right away and exploring them and see what's going on. There's a younger crowd moving into this downtown core, which is what this plan's about. The last city census showed us that twenty percent of the people living in downtown don't own cars. This is a growing mentality among the younger generation. Driving is down almost nine percent over the last, I think, ten years in general in this country. So, you know, I'd love to see this downtown area become a real pedestrian wonderland, you know? Walkability, bikability, transit, you know, make it a real place where you have that sense of community and that sense of place. As of right now, I don't really come downtown that often as a resident. I feel it's very tourist-oriented. There's a few restaurants I like to go to, but I don't go to the promenade to shop, I don't go to the mall to shop. It's just not for me. What I'm looking for are the small businesses, the small cafes. But I also, you know, I want to get to them without having to get into a car. Since I've lived here, I've transitioned to a car-free, a car-light lifestyle over the past seven years. I saw the problems with congestion and I saw the problems with traffic, and I just took myself out of the equation. You know, I started walking more, biking more, using transit. And it's been really exciting to see the city embrace that and move forward on that and make that more of an accessible option for people. I know not everybody can have that option or will take that option, but there's a lot of people who will, an overwhelming majority who will. And if we can make that possible for them, then it makes everybody's lives better. You know, they get, they get to get out and be more connected and closer to the city and get around, and the people who still need to drive can still get, can still drive, but it'll be better because there'll be a lot less cars on the road because all these other people are taking these other options. So, yeah, it's, this is an exciting project, you know? We're just kicking around ideas and we're throwing things out, we're going to see what sticks. And it's just, it's frustrating to hear people just jump right on things before really taking a look at them, you know? They're not all good. They're not all bad. There's been sakes made in the past, but there's been also some really great stuff done in the past, too. So let's just, you know, let's kumbaya and let's get through this and let's, let's really create a cool downtown, let's build this legacy of Santa Monica, and let's maintain that charming and that desirability and that sense of place and community and leave it for our children.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're getting here to the end of the stack, but we have a ways to go. Lauren is next, Cynthia Rose Mitchell, and Phil Brock.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Paul of Lathwin Watkins, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our client, Second Street Corporation, owner of the Huntley Hotel. We would like to express our thanks for engaging in the public process and for giving stakeholders an opportunity to participate and comment. We have specific concerns about the identification of the Miramar site as a potential opportunity site. We want to ensure that any opportunity site designation does not provide increased development rights that conflict with the loose's identification of the Miramar site as a transition site to the adjacent residential neighborhood. As explained in the loose, the Miramar site is intended to provide a transition buffer from the intensity of the downtown for the adjacent residential neighborhoods. Therefore, we think it is critical that the specific plan limit the development envelope for the Miramar site to that provided in the existing zoning ordinance of forty-five feet and 2.0 FAR. This envelope will preserve the character of the surrounding neighborhood, the need to maintain access to light and air, and it would avoid the community's concern about turning Ocean Avenue into Miami Beach. In addition, consistent with the loose, any development on the Miramar property over the base height of thirty-two feet should incorporate significant community benefits. Given the significance of the Miramar development project and its potential impacts on the downtown and the city, we believe the maximum potential development envelope for the site should be established as part of the downtown specific plan process and not during the development agreement process. The maximum potential development envelope must be identified in the specific plan so that all environmental impacts are analyzed as part of the specific plan's ongoing environmental review process. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address this matter.
Thank you. Cynthia Rose.
It is simply a term used to identify larger developments that can provide us with an opportunity to get benefits in return for their development. It's not a blank slate. I hear demands of status quo, but then requests to expand the grid and allow more cars into our city, which creates the very gridlock that we're trying to get away from. We need to make our priority people, how we get around and how we evolve into a more sustainable community. We can never change things by fighting the existing reality. It's no longer 1970. To change something, let's build a new model and make the existing model obsolete. Thank you.
Okay. We have Mitchell next up, but Phil Brock, and then Jacob Samuel.
Well, you know, I'm Chair of the Recreation and Parks Commission, but for a second, I want to go backwards to 1936, when my grandparents came here to Santa Monica, and they lived in this city. My mother was born in the city. My grandmother, she was a maid on Ocean Avenue in a hotel, the Travelodge, for many years. My mother cut nails on Wilshire and 10th Street for years. This is my city, and it's all of our city. And I know that I'm supposed to be concerned just with recreation and parks, but you know what? Mayor, ex-Mayor Feinstein said a great thing, because he and I both walked the beach over and over and over again. And you know, one of the blights on our community was the GTE building, General Telephone Building, which is at 100 Wilshire. That was the worst building that was ever put into Santa Monica, because our skyline is meant to be different from LA's. Drive down Wilshire Boulevard, drive down Olympic Boulevard, come into our city, and you instantly see the difference. You instantly see a more livable skyline. You know, we have a great observation deck in our city. It's called Palisades Park. And, and the same thing that I don't want to sell Palisades Park to the highest bidder, to trainers or anyone else, I also don't need to sell our skyline. Our city is prosperous. Our city will remain prosperous. My grandfather moved a three-story building from Seventh and Wilshire to Ninth and Arizona and built an apartment house with it, cut off the roof in the middle of the night. One of the houses on one of our other properties used to be next to the fire station, it was a garage, and he personally made it into a two-bedroom house. From that garage, he bought for $10. When I was a little kid, on the third floor, the penthouse of our apartment house on Ninth and Arizona, we watched the fireworks in Santa Monica Bay from the roof of my house because there was nothing in front of us that obstructed the vision. That changed. Everyone who lives in the city, everyone who's here now and is concerned with our entire city, and a large portion of that is downtown, we don't need high-rises in downtown. If the Miramar wants to rebuild their tower, I'm all for it. They can build a new hotel tower. But you know what? Five-million-dollar condos are not going to be residents of our city, and they're not going to be people who are patronizing our schools, they're not going to be using our stores downtown. They're going to be vacationers who have bought the condos because they can afford them. We do need housing downtown, and they can't all be one-bedroom and bachelors, because people need to have relationships, they want to get married, and they want to live in our city. And that's important. And you know, I think, everything I've heard, I'm, first of all, amazingly gratified to see all these people here tonight. I'm so happy to see city councilmen and commissioners. And the Planning Commission of this city needs a huge hand, because I'll tell you what, they are doing a yeoman's job in the city of protecting your interest, and that's a good thing. But you know what? The Miramar can build a new hotel, that's fine. Condos aren't going to benefit you, they're not going to benefit me, they're not going to benefit my mother, who's eighty-five, who lives in Santa Monica, they're not going to benefit any of us. A new tower, Frank Gehry, I love Frank Gehry, I love the look of the building, and the building would be fantastic. Put it on Wilshire and Bundy. Put it somewhere else. It doesn't go in the character of our downtown, and it never will. We destroyed Wilshire Boulevard once with the General Telephone Building when I was in high school. We don't need to do that again. Mayor Feinstein mentioned a plan that he and I talked about, which was capping the Santa Monica Freeway from Ocean to Fourth. If the Holiday Inn, now Wyndham, wants to rebuild, absolutely. We'll let them go a story or two more than they have now, as long as they're not denser, as long as they also give us a real community benefit. Cap the freeway and let us add a park there. Add to our park, that's a community benefit. A parking garage that people are going to charge money for is not a community benefit. An observation deck that costs money to go into is by no means a community benefit for our community, because we can walk to the beach, we can bicycle to the beach, we can bicycle to Palisades Park, and that's what we need to do. Downtown specific plan has to include transportation. It has to include bicycling, it has to include housing, and it absolutely has to keep the current caps in most places on buildings. And that's the deal. My mother, my grandparents moved here, my mother met my father at the top of Santa Monica Pier in Palisades Park. My grandparents came down Route 66 to the city. My first great bowl of chili was at Crest and Company, five-and-ten-cent store on the Third Street. Oh, wait, there was no promenade back then. There was Third Street and Fourth Street and Campbell's and Henchies and department stores and all kinds of stores that are gone, and that's okay. I don't bemoan Suite 16, I don't bemoan all the things that have passed, because I love the new, and I love the current and I love the modern. But there are parameters, there have to be parameters. Planning Commission and city staff have to listen to our residents, there have to be parameters. And the parameters have to keep us a livable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob Samuel, Doris Sosin, Avery Ayer, and Anthony Phipps. So we have Jacob, Jacob Samuel. Okay, Doris, Doris Sosin, Avery Ayer, here we go. And then Anthony Phipps is next.
My name is Avery Hour, and I'm a thirty-year downtown Santa Monica resident. I believe in a reasonable revitalization of Santa Monica. I believe that new projects should be considered that keep our city moving into the future while protecting its historic buildings. However, I don't think that these opportunity sites, as they're currently laid out in the downtown specific plan, have enough of a framework to ensure that the new doesn't overwhelm the old. Santa Monica should be modern, yes, but not at the expense of common sense, everyday concerns: traffic, congestion, parking, access to the view of the beach. I don't support high-rise projects next to the waterfront, no matter how much they promise to revitalize our city, because the benefits don't outweigh the costs. Please make sure that the language of the downtown specific plan will stop any building that doesn't belong in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Phipps, Fred Kurz, Silky Kohler, and Kate Paradise.
Anthony? Okay. Hello, my name is Anthony Phipps. My family has lived here for three generations. That's over a hundred years for us, at least. When my grandfather came here, he was an electrical lineman from the East Coast. He came here and he said, wow, what a beautiful city, wonderful world, we've got great view, the sky is here always. Our problem is, we are filling it in with taller buildings. We should limit that to the buildings that surround it. I can understand that, but it is hotels, we do, they do generate some funds for us. But there is a major problem for us, and since I exercise and bike ride everywhere I can, I use a car very limited. If I do use a car, it's without, outside of the city, and when I do use a car, it's very hard to get anywhere. My personal problem is that where there are parking, we are not using it properly at all. all. Where we have one-story or parking lots, it can be used for multi-story buildings. For instance, right down the street from my house, on, I live at Fort and Pier, so straight down the street, there's a parking lot. It could be used as a parking structure and where those cars cannot park, they come up to my house and it's physically impossible to bring anyone from another part of the city into my neighborhood just to have a party in my backyard. I love my house, but the problem is, it's being boxed in by buildings that I can't even see through. The building that was next to me, I'm only 25, and the building that was next to me was built before I was born. I can no longer see the Malibu Mountains or anything because of that building. The two, the two towers, the apartment buildings on the, what was it?
Ocean.
Ocean, thank you. On Ocean, that also blocks, completely blocks the view of the ocean. I can only see roughly 25 feet of the ocean now because of that. I don't mind uprisings of whatnot, but as long as they're kept away from the ocean, we don't want to become another Los, downtown LA. We want to keep our, our buildings smaller so we can still see everything. Our airport that we have in the Santa Monica, I live very close to it and I know the history. It used to be a military factory for old aircraft. If we want to know what noisy aircraft were like, that is a very noisy aircraft. Old war aircrafts, they will shatter your apartment, our apartments, houses, anything. But what we have now, they're really not that noisy at all. I listen to it all the time, I love aircrafts. My father used to work for McDonnell Douglas and Boeing. I've fallen in love with aircrafts for all of that, but the aircrafts that we do have, not that noisy comparative. I go to down, I go to LAX just to listen to the loudest of aircrafts that we do get and I enjoy it, but at the same time, I have a friend who lives near there and he says, even though he lives there for all of his life, he doesn't really mind the noise. We just need to think about what we want to spend our money on and instead of spending it on, for instance, I'm not 100% sure what we're spending most of it on, but we keep on hearing, I, one of my friends just told me about an idea about putting a park straight down Lincoln Boulevard. I drove down Lincoln when I was a plumber. That is the worst idea that I've ever heard of. If you've ever tried to make a left turn or a right turn, or I should say a left turn on Lincoln, physically impossible because there's already enough traffic as it is. And if you add a park in the middle, it will become even more impossible to drive. But the one thing I wanted to mention was, with a bunch of jotting, I should say, we need to work on our parking, but what we do need to work on is the transit or transportation for our residents that do live in Santa Monica, have at least a small fund, if there is a fund, it can be free or it can be funded, but I personally think that people who live within the city, we need to work on our own restriction of our own cars and we do add to our own problems. I'm, and I see it all myself. My father and my mother drive, or my father has a car and my sister has a car, she, my father lives, works in downtown LA and my sister works in Venice. We use our cars all the time. I do not use a car at all because I personally don't need to because all of my jobs, when I've worked as a plumber, a carpenter, a butcher, I've done pretty much everything you can think of, but it's all been in Los Angeles or in Santa Monica, I should say. And I love it because of the city itself. I don't want to have to go and find a job elsewhere because the jobs here are being taken by hotels and other such workers, which is fine with me. But at the same time, we need to restrict the amount, the height of the buildings that are there to something we can enjoy because when we start losing our skyline, or I should say, when we start gaining a skyline like downtown LA is just going to ruin all of us. We're just going to hate it and not be happy about it forever. And the unfortunate part is, we cannot really, I mean, we can attempt to, but the 100, the 100 building will be very hard to take down. I understand construction very well and the one thing we're really messing up on is the fact that we have parking structures, but we only build upwards. We should build down too. We have underneath us thousands of feet that we can use, but we're not going to build down there for many things. It's a very slightly dangerous to put underground, but we can't monitor it as well as we want. But the taller buildings leads to more taller buildings constantly and we can see that forever. And one of the things that I've noticed is, I've only been here for so long, is that I've been noticing progressive growth of taller buildings, but more traffic and less parking for people who do come into our city to spend money on our city because everyone wants to come to Santa Monica. I go camping across the United States and everyone says, whenever I say my, I live in Santa Monica, they're like, oh my God, it's so beautiful. And I agree with them, but when we start building and overbuilding our properties and we're losing what everyone wants to come to see is the beach and Santa Monica, we're just kind of surrendering and kind of rolling over onto the fact that we're accepting sometimes at least to the taller buildings. But for now, let's keep on, keep an eye on all of the management of what the city is trying to plan on us and once they start planning more, jump on their backs on it. But until then, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, several more speakers to go here. Fred Kurz, Silky Kohler, Kate Paradise, Laura Wilson, please come on up. Okay. Any of those, come on. And we need quiet, if you don't mind, we're trying to get through everybody, give everybody the same courtesy we gave the first set of speakers. Silky, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Silky Kohler and I've been a resident since 1992 of Santa Monica. As many of my fellow residents have stated tonight, so opportunity sites identified in downtown specific plan provide a loophole to developers so that they can easily ignore height and density restrictions that apply to the rest of the buildings in the downtown area. If you allow the plan to move forward as it is currently proposed for several of these buildings, you will be sending a message to these developers that the rules can be ignored. These seven sites or eight sites occupy significant space in prime locations in the downtown area and therefore, their heights and densities are of critical importance to the community. This plan must put clear restrictions into place that ensure that any development on these sites will be consistent with the rest of Santa Monica skyline. In regards to the transportation, which you can have mentioned before, that you would like us to take more of the bikes or be more by foot or whatever, I would like to have the city as well to study what kind of accidents by now kind of happened or the severity and things of accidents in the last years in regards to bike.
Do you have another battery?
Sure, and Ocean and had one of my dogs behind me and it was rolled over by a car and I lost her. But it was really, I mean, I had to see it and be there with her and everything. And the driver took off, we later, we got him because somebody followed, but it could have been a kid as well. And that is the things I think we should really look into and maybe even make clear, especially as crossroads, that we have the traffic lights in a way that if the pedestrians have it, so it's green for the pedestrians, that nobody can make a right turn and drive or, also drive through, that there are other light schedules to say for right turns or left turns and so on, that the pedestrians will not be in danger.
Okay.
That is something. And then as well, the same thing with bikes. The bike lanes are here in the United States next to the parking cars. I as well, personally, I nearly, yeah, nearly went over one of the doors before which were opened in front of me. I saw it even happening, that people were kind of taking off the bikes. So I would like to, the city looks further into that and as well, kind of maybe make it a little bit more safer to use the bikes because it is something where we should go for. Another question, another suggestion which I have in regards to the traffic around downtown, if we can have, like we had in the old days, maybe a bus with channels around the downtown core, that you can jump on and off. So that people which are not as good on their foot, that they could get from one to the next area without being in danger and having, and tourists could use it and so on and even if it would cost a token of a dollar or whatever. I mean, something like that and maybe free for elder residents or something like, I would think that that could as well take some of the cars away and make it that people don't have to use their vehicles to get from, let's say, and somewhere Ocean, Ocean and Washington to, let's say, Wond's or so, which they normally would have to use because they couldn't carry their luggage. Their luggage is good, their bags if they go shopping to Wond's or Pavilion or whatever.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Laura, why don't you, Laura?
Check, check.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'd like you to just pay attention for a minute because I think everybody that had an opportunity to speak should have an opportunity to actually be heard. So I want to thank you for being here. I think that you guys have a really, really difficult job and I want to say thank you for doing it because I don't know anything about politics, but I've learned a lot in the last eight weeks. I've learned that these people are volunteering their time to make our city a better place and we should acknowledge them for that. I, thank you. And the people that work at the city, they work for us. They are employees that work for us. Many of them live here, but they are employees, they work for us. They don't dictate what happens in our city, we do. Isn't that the way it's supposed to be? I keep on hearing, the city, the city, the city. Who's the city? The city is the people that live in the city. What happened to that? What happened to the people taking control of what happens in their city? It's who we vote for, that's what creates the city. Historical monuments or historical someone talked about, that was on the top of the list. Go look at the Embassy Hotel and see what happened to that historical, what do you call it, landmark. It's a mess. It's a nightmare. Downtown is moving into your homes. It is moving into residential neighborhoods. It's no longer just in downtown. Opportunity sites is an opportunity for another opportunity and another opportunity and it doesn't stop. And I want to ask one question. When you say you're going to make affordable housing in these opportunity sites, what is affordable housing? What is affordable housing?
Okay.
So the city has, has adopted income levels for households that are low income, very low income, extremely low income and moderate income. There are published income thresholds for each income category for deep restricted housing.
So what are they going to provide in this opportunity sites for income, low income housing? How much is low income mean? What does that, so for example, if they're making $40,000 a year and they're a family of two, I'm going low, how much at a one-bedroom apartment can it cost those people?
Both the income threshold to qualify and the maximum rent that can be charged are dictated by the housing division and those are both published numbers that are applicable citywide. And then the amount of housing and the, and the percentage of that housing that's affordable is up to discussion as we're talking now about these opportunity sites.
So what I'm hearing is, I'm not getting any real numbers. And the reality is, a one-bedroom apartment, brand new one downtown right now is $3,000. $3,000. Who, who can afford that? That's not even, that's not even reality. So what I want to say to you is, if you're going to give these people real opportunity to build and abuse our city, give us some real benefits. This young lady said, I can't move here because I can't find a place to live. Well, I want to say to her, do you think you're going to be able to live in the, in the Miramar? Hello? There's no space in there for you. There's no space in there for anybody that doesn't make a lot of money. So my point is, I'm new to the city and I'm, the reality is, why do we have to bring more money in? That's the better question. Why do we have to let these people come in? What is happening fiscally within our community that is causing us to have to make, sell our city to people who don't live here? That's the question. Why do we have, what is it, 35, one employee for every 35 residents? Is that what the number is? Are we, are we funding, are we, is the reality that the city employees are paying attention to funding pensions and not paying attention to what's happening to the residents? That's what's happening here. That's what's happening. And I know I'm saying things that aren't popular, but the reality is, nobody else wants to speak up and say the truth. People are afraid and I don't understand why. It's time for the city of Santa Monica and the people who live here to wake up and start voting the people out who do not have your interests at heart. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next speakers are Fred Kurz, Kate Paradise, Valerie Griffin. Okay, Fred.
Okay, hard act to follow. Okay, I'm an architect. I work in an office in Venice. I shop and I dine in Santa Monica and I'm concerned what happens here. I want to talk about the opportunity sites. I think they're not all created equal. I think the four that are next to the freeway are the, have the highest, are the sort of the greenest sites that the city can use. One of the advantages is it takes the cars right off the freeway, puts minimal parking lot and doesn't interfere with the traffic for the rest of the city. They provide, you know, whatever billings are there, provide a screen for the freeway, you know, rather than having them on Ocean Avenue, whatever, against the beach and creates a wall. So also, when you put them against the freeway, the only views they're blocking are each other. They're stacking up, you know, rather than being, blocking all the residents. I think some of the, there's hotels and things happening against the freeway and those have a lot of positive impacts. They bring tourists here, they bring money, they bring people that walk the streets because once they park their car, they're going to walk up and down, going to go to the restaurants and to the shops. Let me see. I guess that's about it. I think it makes more sense to stack the billings up against the freeway than it does to block them off in front of the beach. So those are just some comments, observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, Kate Paradise, Valerie Griffin, Ally Hewitt and Rob Goldman. Valerie.
Hi. Valerie Griffin. I have some questions, reading from the loose, but I'll start out with some observations I've had. One of the things that's missing from the downtown specific plan is the notion of jobs-housing balance. We were very careful in putting together the Bergamot Area Plan and some of the other things we've been doing to deal, at least pretend we were dealing with the notion of jobs-housing balance. We phrased it wrong, but that's, and that's not relevant to this part of the topic, but we need to state that for the downtown specific plan, we want to create, I'm pulling numbers out of the air, maybe 1,200 housing units for every thousand jobs we create so that we retain or reverse some of the jobs-housing imbalance we've had in this city. It's also critical, if we have affordable housing, and I'm even talking about housing that is affordable to people who actually make the median income and we want walkability, we absolutely- we absolutely must have affordable retail. We must have retail, dining, grocery stores, the whole realm of needs that people have within walking distance that they can, that we can afford to shop at. I also was at a presentation fairly recently and one of the things that became crystal clear to me during this presentation is that traffic is a choice we all make. Anyplace people want to be has traffic. Also, as people complain about traffic, we become more aware of it and it bothers us more. One thing that we do when we choose how we want to experience the traffic is we choose when to go places, we choose possibly not to go someplace, we also can choose our mode of transportation if the choice is available to us. We need the city to help us make choice of different modes. Someone was complaining, complaining about seeing double long, big red buses and they were complaining about seeing a big blue bus. What on earth would they say if instead of seeing those buses, they saw that many carloads of people? Oh, they wouldn't get to see them because they'd be moving very, very slowly. So we do need the city to help us choose the mode of bus, biking or walking. All of those need to be safe and reasonably convenient. We need much more frequent buses. Now, from the loose, where it doesn't say opportunity sites, and my loose doesn't weigh four pounds, in the downtown district goals and policies, they say on page two dot six dash ten, I think, they say focus new development in the areas of downtown district that are accessible to transit, accommodate mixed use development, contribute to the pedestrian oriented environment and support substantial community benefits in areas such as near the proposed Expo Light Rail Station at the south side of Seventh Street and Wilshire Boulevard, including the preservation of the landmark Wilshire Professional Building at the southwest corner of Lincoln Boulevard and Broadway, along Lincoln and Wilshire Boulevards to establish a seamless transition between the downtown and the adjacent residential neighborhoods to the north and east, on and around the site of the existing Holiday Inn near Second Street in Colorado, including the possibility of decking the freeway to create expanded opportunities for shared parking, open space and potentially new development with linkages to the Civic Center District, the Four Point Acres Site at the northeast corner of Wilshire Boulevard at Ocean Avenue, which due to its prominent location and unobstructed ocean views could be the site of exceptional planning and design, the area near Second Street and Santa Monica Boulevard. They didn't call them opportunity sites, but they had the concept and they did list a lot of them. Now, I've got some questions for staff. I seem to remember a lot of compromises during the time of the loose. I have learned a lot more about how things got put together since I was participating in that, but I'd like you to refresh me on trade offs during this loose process where height was the compromise. I seem to remember that being part of how we ended up with a few places where height could squirt up without as much constraint as elsewhere. And I'd like to know, to know what the pros and cons are from your perspective of setting heights and densities upfront versus negotiating as we have in DA process.
Okay, good questions. Thank you very much.
I've got a couple more questions, but let's.
Okay, let's see if we can, those are, those are essay type questions, so not easy yes and no. Go ahead, Sarah.
So I'm trying to make sure that I understand exactly what you said. So I think what you were saying is, what were the trade offs in the dialogue in the loose about how we would reach some places where we would allow greater height and density?
And during the process, not, not just during this book or in the book, but the processes that led up to the compromises.
Right, and I think there was at that time, a lot of discussion about how to preserve the neighborhoods. So one of the things that folks talked about is if there would be potential growth locating in places near transit. And so when you read that list from the loose, I think those were sites in the downtown, and I'm only going to talk about the downtown here, were sites where they were located near transit, they were accessible, they seemed to be able to be large enough and of the, in a certain area where they could provide benefits in exchange for some possible height or density increases. At this point, we're not talking yet about what those heightened density increases would be because it's really important that we see what kind of community benefits and what kind of packages would be offered in order to evaluate what the right heightened density could be.
Okay, anybody else?
And particularly some of the pros and cons of setting, of saying it can go higher versus nothing can go more than eighty-four feet, which by the way, if we're going to stipulate heights, I think those heights that we stipulate where we say eighty-four feet in some places should be associated with the number of floors, like eighty-four feet might be six floors. But some places where we say if it's going to be limited to no more than eighty-four feet, what, what do we lose?
Francie? Sarah?
If I understand the question right, again, they are essay questions.
Yes, well, you know me.
I think former Mayor Feinstein kind of spoke to that a little bit, this sort of, there is a sort of reasonable intellectual debate about if the FARs remain largely the same across a larger site, you could decide whether or not there is an advantage or a benefit to going higher, or you could decide it's not worth it. I mean effectively, if the FARs stay the same, if the building form goes higher in one portion, you do have the potential, if it's desired by the community, to have ground floor, you know, some, some open space, some plaza space, some other uses at the ground level that are more permeable or publicly accessible. So that's, that's primarily kind of the root of it.
So it would even be something like breezes?
You could, if that was what people wanted to do.
So that we could get the air going through.
Could, if that was a priority.
Okay. Now, another question that I have is, how can we target housing price? I think there have been questions, affordable housing keeps coming up and it's wonderful that we have some explicit level of affordability for the low, very low and extremely low income. But would it be possible, and if so, how, and I know that we don't have any of our legal people here, to add a target for our housing so that the median rental housing in Santa Monica was some portion of the, within a certain portion or range of the median housing cost throughout a larger area?
Okay, so you're, you're asking, can the city prescribe a certain number of units in those different categories?
Not just units, but in overall, so that we, we can perhaps in some way target what our overall median housing cost could be. I have no idea how it would be done. It's an absolute question. I, I have no clue as to how it would be done or if it's even possible.
Well, as you know, the, the city has an affordable housing ordinance that requires a certain amount of affordable housing for all residential developments. That could always be changed, so I think what you're talking about would actually be a change to that ordinance. One of the things that we're looking at is for tier two projects, for example, perhaps they provide more affordable housing than a base project. And then also for any project that is a development agreement, that certainly can be negotiated so that there's more affordable housing included in those projects than what the existing ordinance requires.
Okay, so, but at least we, it's something that we should probably consider going forward and one more of, I, this is a scary topic to me because I have no idea how it's going to be implemented, but if I knew the answers, I wouldn't be asking. How do we envision implementing transfer of development rights to achieve certain kinds of community benefits, particularly historic preservation? And now I'll give it back to you.
Okay, Sarah, thank you very much.
Thank you for asking that question. Certainly we recognize that it's really important and that's a dialogue that we've been having and we've been looking very carefully at other cities and other communities that have transfer of development right programs. And as many things in Santa Monica, we're not quite like anybody else. And so we need to be very thoughtful and very careful about how we apply it to our own cities. So I think sort of the short answer is, is a great question, we're thinking about it and we're looking at it very deeply. And I think at this moment, we don't yet have the right mix and we are going to be rolling it out as we roll out the plan.
Excuse me, for those of us among the proletariat, could you briefly describe transfer of development rights for the city?
Okay, so the, the question is, the terminology, transfer of development rights, what does that concept mean? Can we just get a very basic definition?
Yes, in many cities, there's this opportunity to do a transfer development rights. If you have a historic resource, you can, that resource can sell the air rights to their site, assuming that it won't grow or it won't get taller, that it's a historic resource and it will be preserved in its current state, can sell the air rights to a developer who can then benefit from, benefit that resource by protecting it so it won't be knocked down and rebuilt and use the air rights on their own site. Now, it's a fairly complicated process, there are many different ways that it can be applied. And we're sort of recognizing that in this city, we have a lot of landmarks and so that for those landmarks, that's not actually necessary because they are landmarked.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Ally Hewitt, Rob Goldman, Brian Glasby and Emily McCarron. All right, we still got a few more, so hang in there with us, please.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you guys for hearing us tonight. I'm young, as you can see, and I do live in Santa Monica on Ocean Park. I want people with lower incomes to have a chance to live downtown in quality housing. Santa Monica has a downtown and we should start looking at it with downtown eyes to see how it can work better for us. Tonight, I believe there are rich developers in this room and I want them to pay for the privilege of being here in Santa Monica. I want them to invest in our downtown, especially in the eight opportunity sites. Downtown developers should hire great architects, make the greenest buildings possible and provide benefits for the community. Their investment should pay dividends to everyone. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ally. Rob?
Thank you. I'd like to briefly and specifically address open space and the pedestrian environment in the downtown area. I hear staff saying that more open space at the ground floor is a community benefit and I take strong exception to that. Every square foot of open space is a developer benefit every bit as much as a community benefit. Three specific suggestions, which I strongly feel should be in the zoning code and not considered to be a community benefit because each of these suggestions, again, benefit the developer as much as the community. First, a required setback to expand pedestrian walkways either with a ten foot strip across the front of a property or a five hundred plus or minus square foot courtyard adjacent to the sidewalk. Second, a required mid-block pedestrian passageway in lieu of a sidewalk setback. Again, a developer benefit as well as a community benefit with increased foot traffic, increased retail exposure and more light in the air for the units above. And third, separation of buildings above the ground floor retail base would go a long way toward adding the unending, or toward ridding the unending robotic look of buildings, cheek and jowl, what I described as facotomy. And again, this will provide another developer benefit for light in the air for the units above. Good design is good economics. Greater density is not good design. Required onsite open space is also good economics, again, for both the developer and the community. And I'd like to hear the thoughts, staff's thoughts about these suggestions for a more walkable and livable environment.
Very good. Thank you, Rob. Some quick feedback on those comments as per the request, Sarah or Francie?
I mean, I could start with the, the ground floor setback to expand the sidewalks is precisely what we were illustrating in one of the diagrams. We hardly agree that where there can be a continuous sidewalk created, we should seek to do so with regard, yes, we've said that it would be a requirement, it's not considered to be a community benefit, it would be part of the required standards. We didn't get into detail about that tonight, so we hope that we'll be able to have that conversation with you at a later time. With regard to the ground floor open space, definitely open space can be a benefit to some of the ground floor uses. We recognize that outdoor dining and creating courtyards can be a real asset to those ground floor uses and we hope that they are well managed and well taken care of. We have to be cognizant of, of just land use law, which is that property owners have the right to exclude people from their property if they so choose and so to have truly publicly accessible open space within which you could protest or you could be there when the property owner didn't want you to be, that is a community benefit, that is not something the city can just require as right of any property owner, including you and your home or any property owner in the downtown. So there is a big difference between an outdoor dining area that someone controls and could close up at night and what is to be operated like a public park. And so we understand that this community is interested in public open space that's truly public and that's why that's on the table as a community benefit in certain limited circumstances, but that doesn't mean that there won't also be requirements for private open space that can be a wonderful place for all of us to use when we want to patronize those businesses. They are separate but complementary components that we see that could be potential future part of the downtown plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Brian Glasby, Ally, Emily McCarron. Where's Brian? Okay.
Hello, hello, hello. I think everybody's about sleepy right now. I'm, I'm kind of not here, just to make a couple of comments and bring some perspective. My name is Brian Glasby. I'm a business owner, small business owner and a resident of Santa Monica newly, about, about a year and a half. But it's where I came from, which is interesting. I actually grew up in New Jersey and was able to travel as a young boy across the George Washington Bridge, across the Bronx, getting right, going up ninety-five, you see something called Co-op City. Has anybody ever hea- heard of Co-op City? Oh, it was a development masterpiece, wasn't it? Oh my God. The largest monstrosity of development ever made for housing, okay? Became a money pit for the city and the state, a disaster as an eyesore going up ninety-five into New England, okay, in the New England area. But it was iconic, someone said iconic design. First of its kind, actually. And they're still paying for it, the state of New York is still paying for it, okay? That's number one. I had the opportunity of seeing that. Then I went to school in Philadelphia, Temple University. And during that time, there was a debate whether they should build above Ben Franklin's hat. Everybody, if you know Philadelphia, Ben Franklin's hat, anybody from Philadelphia knows that they fought about that and they gave certain businesses exemptions because they were a couple of blocks away from the center city. Now, have you been to Philadelphia? Once you open that can of worms, you can't even see Ben Franklin's hat. You can only actually see the, what do you call it, the Liberty Bell and all of the historic district from east of, if I'm not mistaken, of Market Street and Broad, Broad and Market. That's the only way you'll see it now. There, they call it a beautiful city. It is what we call a concrete jungle. Exactly. So then, for all you people who were mentioning South Beach, I lived in South Beach for eight years. I actually was down there, used to travel down there. I actually was down there, used to travel down there in 1992. Everyone remembers South Beach. It used to be Mom and Pop, Lincoln Road, Mom and Pop. You guys have a Third Street Promenade that went through the same gentrification as far as businesses in concern. Now, of course, nobody expected a concrete jungle on South Beach. They allowed a couple, the Lowes, to come in. Oh, my God, it's going to bring money, and the development is going to bring money. South Beach School System, their, what is it, their secondary school, I think, before I left, had an F-rating for schools with all of those billion-dollar condos that surround and line the beach. F-rating. Why? Is because the developers found a way, loopholes, to get out of it. I'm just bringing perspective. I'm not saying that I'm for or against. I'm just going to bring this in perspective, okay? Someone said, great cities, oh, that's all professional. I've been on boards before, and I've seen this before, professional. It is professional. That's what they do. They do professional drawings. They do professional 3D scale, scope, everything. But at the end of the day, the reason why I moved to Santa Monica was the same reason why I moved to South Beach, is because it was a nice, sleepy, beach, laid-back type of town. And when you open that can of worms, and I understand, many of you will not be here in 20 years in your same position, when you open that can of worms, all I'm saying, for perspective, watch out.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. So we have Emily McCarron, Perry White, Amy Oxtikolnis, and Taffy Patton. Okay, here we go.
So just on a quick side note, before I get to my actual point, if you guys don't like the traffic, you should take the bus more. That's what I do. It helps. You get places quicker, and you can read or do get things done. But anyways, I moved to Santa Monica because I feel like it has the best of both worlds. I love that it has the small-town feel, but also the city aspect to it. Most people my age want to live in a city. I personally am from another tourist town who doesn't like tourism. But we have to accept the fact that this is Santa Monica. Everyone in the world either wants to live here or at least come and visit here. So I think that it would actually be in our best interest to really look at how we could exploit, making the best design, getting the most revenue, and getting the greatest community benefits for the eight spots downtown. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. Perry White, Amy, and sorry for the pronunciation again, on Washington Avenue, is it Amy? That I could read. Okay.
Amy Oxtikolnis. Okay, please. Amy Oxtikolnis. I live on Washington Avenue in Santa Monica, obviously. I am the Chair of Northeast Neighbors, but I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself. I am a 16-year resident and have lived in a variety of sections of town. I even used to work in the downtown core for about eight, 10 years before we moved just a little bit further up Bollinger Boulevard into West LA. So I have a unique perspective of having lived just outside of the downtown area and actually worked in the downtown area on a daily basis for many, many years. As a number of individuals have already spoken about earlier tonight, I think, I also think that sunlight, ocean breezes, and ocean views are a city's greatest assets and community benefits. These assets, in my opinion, should be preserved and vehemently protected as part of our downtown-specific plan, not blocked and permanently destroyed by the development of rows of tall, dense buildings. In my opinion, the currently proposed guidelines for the downtown area are too high and too dense, and in conflict with the core values and visions of Santa Monica identified by community members as part of the loose. And what I wanted to do was read a section of the loose real quickly for everybody, because I know it's late. In the community benefits section of the loose, it says, "Throughout the loose three-year community outreach process, a continuing and interactive dialogue identified the core values of the community. Participants responded to the question, 'What makes a livable city?'" And the response that's written in the loose is, "For Santa Monicans, it's the preservation of a vibrant beach-town atmosphere, the enhancement of the sense of community, the conservation of unique and diverse neighborhoods." And it goes on and on. But nowhere in there does it say that we want higher and denser buildings in the downtown area or opportunity sites, at least as I can see, with unlimited heights and densities. So in my opinion, it seems to me we should be looking to emulate other beach-town communities in terms of determining the zoning and the heights and density for our downtown area. In terms of specifics and things I'd like, I would like to support, I would support height and density limits of two, three, or four stories in our downtown area to provide for more human-scale downtown, as a number of people talked about. A reduction in the proposed densities and FARs. I also would like to see step downs in the maximum heights and densities along Ocean Boulevard and adjacent to our residential neighborhoods. I also think Ruth Ann Lair's recommendation earlier tonight of making the Third Street Promenade a conservation area so that the character and nature of that community and area can be preserved is a terrific idea. I think that's a great suggestion. I also support getting clearer and specific heights and densities for the opportunity sites. And in terms of a proposal related to that, I think that the additional height and density that should be allowed for an opportunity site should be tied to the zone that it's in, because right now the city is proposing different zones even within the downtown area. And I think, you know, we should set a maximum on the additional that you would be allowed over DA, say, one story or 10 feet as a maximum in terms of what you would be allowed over what has already been determined for the zone for that area, but no more than that. And lastly, I'm going to turn the page, sorry. Forgive me. The ultimate success, I think, of the downtown-specific plan is contingent upon a real and viable traffic mitigation and circulation plan. To effectively achieve the loose's imperative of no net new PM trips, I believe a traffic study should be conducted before the downtown-specific plan is finalized, and a structure for ongoing monitoring be included as part of the final downtown-specific plan. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Amy. Let's see, Taffy Patton, Roger Swanson, Xena Josephs.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Taffy Patton. I live in the Womond area. I do believe we need to be forward-thinking, and part of being forward-thinking is thinking that building skyscrapers in Santa Monica would kill the golden egg. We're a tourist Mecca, and we're a tourist Mecca partly because we're unique. We don't want to look like Santa Monica. We don't want to look like LA. We don't want to look like Westwood. We're sort of an inviting, low-rise, human-scale city, and that's why the tourists want to come here. And tourists come with very deep pockets. They fill up our hotel rooms, and they bring money, and we like their money. I support a four-to-five-foot-story height maximum, depending on the zone, including what we call the opportunity sites. We should have height and density limitations everywhere throughout the city. No place should have Kingsnet or a free pass. Yeah, we should be forward-thinking, but we still should have limitations. The planning commission works very hard, and they need to work hard on this to keep the developers from eating us alive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, Roger Swanson, Xena Josephs, Ruben Brathman? Okay. Okay, Xena, Roger's not here.
I think he's not.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I've lived in Santa Monica for 44 years. In 2005, at the beginning of the loose process, Friends of Sunset Park surveyed Ocean, boy, I'm tired, surveyed Sunset Park residents. We mailed the questionnaire to our members, and we flyer'd all 7,000 homes in our neighborhood, and we got about 325 responses. Question 10 was, "What is your experience with traffic in downtown Santa Monica?" Congested, 31%. Very congested, 27%. Extremely congested, something needs to be done right now, 30%. Question 13, "Some residents have been frustrated by the city's approval of large development projects that have led to increased traffic congestion. If the city remains unresponsive, would you favor requiring voter approval of large developments?" Yes, 85%. Question 26, regarding building height, the range downtown is generally three to six stories, and on Ocean Avenue, three stories. What would you want in downtown? 11% wanted higher, 20% wanted lower, 70% wanted to maintain current heights. On Ocean Avenue, 6% wanted higher, 17% wanted lower, 77% wanted to maintain current heights. At that time, the owner of Santa Monica Place had proposed a redevelopment that included 21-story towers with 350 condo units. 86% of the respondents opposed that. So here we are, eight years later, and we're seeing heights up to eight stories, plus apparently allowing developers at the eight opportunity sites to build up to 320 feet. And the reason I say that is because the Miramar proposal now is 260 feet plus 60 feet of architectural feature on the roof, which means 320 feet, even taller than the GTE building. The Gary-designed Hotel Condos, 244 feet, and the Wyndham Hotel, according to newspaper reports, 195 feet. Two other fairly tall buildings on Ocean Avenue currently are the Pacific Plaza at 170 feet and 1221 Ocean at about 160 feet. So when we talk about flexibility for the opportunity sites, it reminds me of bankers wanting deregulation, because we all know what that led to. We don't want a wall of tall buildings along Ocean Avenue blocking the light and the ocean breezes that brought many of us to Santa Monica. Just because developers look at downtown and see dollar signs, it doesn't mean that we're required to allow them to ruin the city that we love. San Francisco is a peninsula. Santa Monica is not. And our Friends membership forums this year, as always, list traffic and too much development as their major concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Xena. Ruben Brathman, Richard Hilton, Ellen Brennan. Okay.
I'm Ruben.
Ruben, okay.
Hi. Here we go. You know, I'm Ruben Brathman. I live up the street on Fifth Street, just up a half a block from the New Expo Terminal. I'm going to make this short, because I feel like I'm talking to myself essentially here. But anyhow, I'm concerned about the quality of life, and I think most of the remarks here have been made address that. What most intrigues me is traffic. That's the lifeblood of our community. One of the things that really blew me out of the water was the traffic waiting to get off the freeway at 26th Street. It only extends for about a mile or so, and that keeps getting longer and longer. I live downtown. Gridlock down there used to be, oh, up to about Fifth Street, maybe Sixth Street, now up to Lincoln Boulevard. So what I'm concerned about is whether we aren't going to choke ourselves off. In other words, anybody that comes here is going to have to battle a wall of cars. For me to get home, I have to battle a wall of cars. For me to get out of my garage, I have to battle a wall of cars. Not much fun. Not my idea of quality of life, yet development takes place seemingly without any recognition of what the consequences are in regard to access. And I don't know. I think it's just another instance of a bubble that's growing here. How long can we sustain growth until we choke ourselves off? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ruben. Richard Hilton, Ellen Brennan, Jamie Jackson, Tricia Crane, India Brookover, any of those. Come on up here. Nobody? Oh, here we go. Sorry.
I've been around the city since 1951.
Richard Hilton.
Since 1951, and I've seen the changes, and for the most part, the development has been very measured throughout the city, except for the last two years. And that's what brings me to the meeting. I'm very involved in community and have been for, in multiple communities. I've been on my library board and designed a new library. I've been on the Disabilities Commission for nine and a half years. I missed one meeting, 107 meetings. And I'm currently on the Housing Commission for two-plus years. I've been committed, in fact, to affordable housing and fairness in housing for many decades. I remember as a boy working for Civic Auditorium in 66, and I also remember taking a fishing trawler from the pier and fishing, deep-sea fishing. And I also remember fog that used to come to Santa Monica and bank all the way to 25th Street. You couldn't see anything beyond four feet. We don't have fog, and we don't have many fish. But I'm concerned about the lack of transparency between planning as well as, and the connection with the development community. This is a concern of mine. And I'm concerned why planning can't perhaps reach out more to our residents. As far as the downtown, the design, I'd like to see more setback. I'd like to see balconies that don't extend into alleyways. And I'd like to see a park, like urban parks, that have trees, grass, and less building construction, such as we don't need promontories with observation decks. As far as affordable housing, and that's been mentioned tonight, and I know that our affordable housing program is right now under consideration for a redesign because our rents are not reaching the need in the community. And I remember, in fact, three weeks ago, we had an important meeting with a panel proposing to lower maximum rents to better benefit the seniors and the disabled. And there was a prominent developer at that meeting who gave an example of rents that he, that indeed is part of the affordable housing program, at $1,500 a month for singles and 18, approaching $1,800 for one bedrooms. And he said that his profit would be significantly affected if we lowered the maximum rents. The question, of course, is, are we benefiting the need, or is the developer profiting? And I think clearly, that's why the Housing Commission, in fact, is looking clearly at the design and the challenges, and going to be making some improvements. At any rate, that's about the comments I would make.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Richard. Okay. Ellen Brennan, Jamie Jackson, Tricia Crane, India Brookover, any of those people, please come on up. You are?
Thank you.
Ellen?
Oh, Ellen. I didn't see you.
Okay. Jamie? Tricia?
I am going to be blunt. This, thank you. This downtown-specific plan, to me, is the most blatant attempted rape of a community, to my knowledge, in this country. Without any, without any input from the residents of Santa Monica outside the development community, the planning of downtown has been turned over to the developers with instructions to city staff to accommodate them. I believe the term was to be a go-to, what was it? To be a staff that says yes, or something to that effect. What other city do you know of that's turned its land use planning over to developers? Many developers are carpetbaggers who will build, flip the property, leave town with the cash, and leave the problems to us. The people spearheading the Miramar rebuild on behalf of one of the richest men on the planet indicated that, yes, that could happen with that project. Today, I sat at the Faculty Center at UCLA with 200 other people and listened to Lady Carolyn Ashton, Foreign Minister of the European Union. She is also the President of the British House of Lords, with a background in negotiating trade treaties. She was asked many tough questions about trade negotiations and the EU's relationship with Syria and Iran and Libya. Hired consultants who focused on trivia-like gateways. Hired consultants who focused on trivia-like gateways, and structured meetings up until now, intended to minimize our input. There is rage in this town, real rage. You'll hear it in the newspaper articles that are being written, you hear it on street corners, you hear it in conversations. I expect this to end. I expect staff to start paying attention to what residents want and come back with a real plan that indicates that you've heard us. We want to height the limit of six stories and no opportunity sites. Otherwise, the rage that's being expressed here and all over town is gonna grow. There are no community benefits that you can conjure that will make up for destruction of the low-rise beach town we love, and I doubt that's negotiable.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thank you very much. Tricia is next. And then Jamie Jackson and India.
I don't like to follow Ellen Brennan. But I want to, first, I want to thank the Neighborhood Council, the people who represent all of the neighborhood associations and Santa Monica Coalition for a Livable City for making this meeting happen. This meeting was not going to happen, despite what Francie has said about how great it is that we're still in process. This was only created because of your pressure, and we all need to know that and recognize that. So I urge, as much as we have been somewhat dismissed by city council members, some of them, I urge the community to join their neighborhood associations and prove that we do represent you, because that is what we want to do. I'm a member of Northeast Neighbors. I must say that it's very powerful to be in a meeting like this, because there's so many smart people. And that, I include the Planning Commission in that, and our planners. I think what's really important to remember is, this is a political process. The people in the back of the room are council members, developers, developer lawyers. Those are the people pulling the strings. These lovely people are talented and capable of doing great things for our city, but they're not being asked to. They're being told to bow down to the developers. And until we take our city back politically, all of this good input is gonna be in the trashcan. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Let's see, do we have Jamie Jackson, India Brookover, and Robin Nides, all up next, please?
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for, thank you to whoever ordered the pizza. My name is Jamie Jackson. I am a resident. I live over at Ninth in Arizona. Unfortunately, as my student loans come into repayment, that won't be for long. I believe that the specific plan offers a great opportunity for the opportunity sites and the downtown to increase height and density, to create affordable housing for people like myself. Santa Monica is a great city, and I feel lucky to live here, at least for now. Is a city with many residents who seem to support affordable housing, and this downtown-specific plan is a mechanism to achieve that. I support reducing parking requirements, which will also help the affordability of housing. Let's see, my notes are all scattered. I feel that these opportunities provide a great way to increase diversity, because the nostalgia of the sleepy beach community that you guys speak of is just that. It is a longing for something of the past. You have to look towards the future. You have to look at people like myself, millennials, that are going to help shape the future of this community. Because if we maintain the status quo, Santa Monica will be no more than a high-income and retirement community. Thank you.
Jamie? Jamie?
Oh.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have the next speakers? India Brookover, Robin Nides, Catherine Eldridge?
Okay, I'm gonna direct this to the Planning Commission in the city, because you guys are a tough audience. I just wanted to say that I was born and raised in Santa Monica on Seventeenth and Wilshire, and now I'm twenty-seven years old, and unfortunately, I cannot afford to live here, even though I attend UCLA. Very few people that I grew up with can afford to live here. And I had a wonderful childhood here, and it's sad of me that it would be very difficult to afford to raise a family here if I chose to do so. So, in this note, I strongly urge the city to allow density bonuses for affordable housing. Santa Monica is a wonderful city with a high rate of job opportunities and a great school district. Unfortunately, the city has been increasingly less, has had an increasingly less diverse population that, from the one that I remember from my childhood. I would also like to add that, you must take note that there are people who do not think that traffic is that bad here. You should really look at Wilshire and Westwood Boulevard, which I experience every day. I have maybe driven the seventeen blocks to downtown a handful of times in my eighteen years of living here. I never thought there was that much traffic when I did drive. And also, back to the affordable housing, I would like to add that if there is any way that the city can really support the square, having a square footage of affordable housing that is big enough for a family. I've seen a lot of affordable housing projects that, you know, are really manageable for certain people, but they're too small. Sometimes they're four hundred square feet, and they really can only support single young people like myself, which is awesome. But I'm really considering the types of people that want to live in, who work, who work in Santa Monica and want their students to attend our school district and have every right to live here, as much as all of you guys do. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, Robin Nides and Catherine Eldridge? Okay, Catherine? And, you wanted your note card?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is Robin here? No? Okay. And then after that, John Joyce?
Okay. In two thousand and six, I made a trip to the Building and Safety Department, and by the way, that's a gem. You should go down there and meet those people someday. Because I could not find the ordinance which defined high-rise building. It was in the fire department codes, and it was fifty-five feet. Two thousand and six. I'd like to know if that's been changed, and if so, when? And furthermore, at a city council meeting for the, for the budget, the fire department stated with much pride that their response time was four to six minutes. Four to six minutes. Now, what will it be like if the downtown area and the Bergamont are built out to the level that it's already in the pipeline? Do you think you will ever again see four to six-minute response time? Most of you know I live at Village Trailer Park, and most of my friends and neighbors are in their eighties and nineties. We depend on the fire department a lot, and we've never lost one yet. But put in Bergamont and watch the loose go to work, and I assure you, when we prevail and continue to live there, we'll lose residents because they won't be able to get to us. Okay, finally, Mr. Kunk, this is for you. I can't resist. What diversity. Santa Monica has lost almost all, almost all of its extremely low-income residents. The one thousand to one thousand five hundred bottom-income tier, just recently defined by this commission, is hundreds of dollars higher than the rest of the county. Seniors average, according to the latest census, one thousand five hundred per month. That's average. Someone on SSI receives about nine hundred dollars per month. Again, who have you protected with your building standards and vision? Certainly not the diversity you talk about. And for a higher-density city, that's all it's about. We must rethink how we define our city and insist on livable limits. And I'd like to lastly address that young woman who said that she can't afford to live here, because there's no housing she can afford. I would like to refute that myth. That's a myth that the developers and the planners want you to swallow. There's plenty of housing. It's that they can't afford the limits that have been put on it. There's plenty of housing. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have your note card? Sorry. Okay. John Joyce, Gwen, John Pats, Nina Fresco?
Good evening. I'm John Joyce. I'm a professional engineer and a pilot. In nineteen seventy-three, I got married, bought a house in Santa Monica, and had a child. I've raised two children there, and I've traveled all over the world. Whenever I come home from anywhere in the world, the best place on the planet to come home to is my house on Stanford Street. I love it here. I've lived here half my life. After listening to all the comments I've heard tonight, I have great respect for the knowledge and awareness of the residents of Santa Monica on what's going on here. One thing I didn't hear mentioned was the effect of development on weather. It's pretty well-established around the world that the weather in your big cities is affected by the big city, by the, by the people, and especially by the energy that's emitted there. It affects every component of the official weather report. The wind, the visibility, the clouds, the sky cover, the temperature, the dew point, atmospheric pressure. So the development has a huge effect on the weather that we treasure here. I also have great confidence in the people of Santa Monica to manage their own city and their own environment. The primary purpose of my address here is to try to establish and maintain a permanent representation by the, by the residents, the major stakeholders in Santa Monica, and effective input to every aspect of planning and running this city.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John. Is Gwen still here? Gwen? Okay. And then followed by, following Gwen is John, John Pat, Pets, Fats, I'm sorry, Nina Fresco, Todd Stevens, and Daniel Galamba.
Thank you. When I first came to this region thirty-eight years ago to go to UCLA, I said, where should I live? And you know where they said that you probably wouldn't enjoy is Santa Monica. Why? It was boring, sleepy, not much going on, rolled up the carpets at seven-thirty at night. Is this the place that I really wanted to be? Maybe I should be in Hollywood, which is a much more interesting place. Well, I've always grown up by the ocean, so I've been a resident now for thirty-eight years, and I'm one of your stakeholders that you keep talking about. And this is a city that I think has become very vibrant, very interesting, and a great place to be. In fact, as I've traveled around the world and looked at places that I've enjoyed, amongst some of those, the greatest ones are places like San Francisco or Paris. And why are they such wonderful cities? Well, they have great street life, there's the right kind of urban density to allow people to really live, work, sleep, play, do all of those kinds of things. And when your density's too low, it's very hard for that to happen. And what this city has, particularly in its downtown area, is that certain kind of density that we really need to maintain, and over the last ten, fifteen years, has become interesting. It's had the four to eight stories in height that is similar to large parts of San Francisco and to Paris. And of course, with that, it supports all of the other things, such as transportation. So that these cities of this size, people don't principally get around by driving. Why would you want to drive? Almost everything that you want to have and do is within a short walk, or you can get on some really effective public transportation or cycle. And that's where we need to be with this, and how this needs to happen through here. Obviously, the right kind of density with the right kind of transportation makes all the difference. And I think, like any great city, there should be something that is, occasionally breaks the mold. Because if everything is uniform, it becomes, quite frankly, indistinguishable. So having those opportunity sites, I think, really adds to the vitality of the city. By the way, it should be noted that almost all of those opportunity sites aren't going to have a floor-area ratio that any greater than that, those parts of it around. So in fact, all of these sites that we've been talking about are still in the region of a three-point-oh FAR, plus or minus some. So, you know, I mean, I think that this is where the interest lies in all of this. So density really allows for interest, keeps the city vital. Remember, the loose really was an agreement between us, as the citizens, and how we were going to look to improve our community, which was that we would restrict this to four percent of the land mass, and that was principally in the downtown area and at the Bergamont and along the main transit corridors. And it was by doing that that we, in fact, preserved the nature of the city as we know it and love it. I live in a multifamily residential zone in Sunset Park. I'm in a single-family residence, and I'm fine with that, and that's okay. And that's what made, this made this really interesting. So remember, the loose really did expect the downtown to become more dense, to preserve the fabric of the rest of the city, and to develop housing of all sorts and economic security. Thank you, and I hope you move forward.
Okay. Thanks, John. Thank you, Gwen. Let's see, John is next, then we have Nina, Todd, and Daniel Galamba.
Thank you. You know, last time I was in Paris, I remember standing on the Eiffel Tower and noticing how all the development was pretty uniform, and it was not high at all. Across the river, there was a new development, which was a series of skyscrapers that were neatly tucked across the river and away from the historic district. Nobody comes to Paris to see those skyscrapers. Not a single individual flies to Paris to spend time looking at a group of financial buildings. They come there for the architectural beauty that is not tall, it's not high, so I don't know your vision. I'd say the same about Rome as well. So I don't think we're in danger of being a boring city by not having skyscrapers. One of the things I just wanted to say, because everybody said so many great things, and I literally, I've been to a lot of meetings over a lot of years, I'm a twenty-five-year resident of the city, and I've seen a lot of people come together to work on issues. And seldom have seen so many focused, committed, educated, and up on the issues people show up at a meeting as this one, so it's really stellar. My concern, and I wish I could have said this earlier, but it was my fault for not getting into chit, is that I've learned in this political process here that it takes time and it takes an ongoing commitment to make any difference. The people who have a different point of view than some of you are being paid to forward that point of view. They, it's their job. So if the city manager directs the staff to entertain certain ideas, well, it's their job to entertain those ideas and move them forward and take those meetings with developers. And if developers hire attorneys and they've got staff, well, it's their job, and they're all getting rich, doing their jobs, or making very good incomes, doing their jobs. So all of us, who are people who have a different point of view about development, are volunteers who are spending time at the end of our days. So I just wanted to underscore how important it is for people who actually care about these issues to continue to be involved, because at the end of the day, I have learned that even though you might think you make really good arguments, often people will not change their mind based on how good an argument you made. They will often change their mind in the end, because it's in their best interest to do so. And that's real politics, and that's how it works. So if you have, for instance, in this town, we're run by a city council, and we have a number of members up there on the council, some of whom share some of the ideas that were here this evening, others the ideas that were here this evening, others who don't. The people who don't share this concern are probably not going to start to share this concern until they begin to feel that there's a sufficient level of heat, ongoing heat and activity in the city to make this something that they really don't want to turn away from. So I just wanted to say, encourage people that if you really do care about the future of Santa Monica, and I will come out clearly and say, I'm one of the people who loves our city. I've had the pleasure, over all the years I've lived here, I've ongoingly been able to say to people, and although I have to admit it's waning with the congestion, the traffic is really, it's really killing me just to see what happens. I mean, you can't get out of the town after 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and when you try to come here in the morning, you know, you watch the miles-long traffic, and nobody in this town is laying out a comprehensive plan. I honestly think it's sort of a Jackson Pollock approach to development. And I have not heard any responsible person step forward and give us a comprehensive vision for how this is all supposed to work. I mean, we talk about bikes. I'm a big fan of bikes. I'm in the Recreation and Parks Commission, and one of the things we want to do is create more opportunity for people to bike. We're telling parents they should have their kids bike to school, which I support. However, any reasonable parent will say, what? And get them killed? You know how dangerous it feels riding around here on bikes? So when we look to plans for how to reduce the amount of traffic and have less density in terms of congestion, yet we don't already have the systems in place to even make that possible. So I have all those concerns, and I share all those concerns with you, but my biggest one is the level of ongoing participation it takes to make any difference. So, you know, I wish I'd said it earlier, but obviously, I'm speaking to the already converted at this point, or a few people who are still working this evening. But anyway, good luck.
Thank you, John. Okay. Nina Fresco, Todd Stevens, Daniel Galamba, Amy Brunel. Here we go.
Hi, I'm Nina Fresco. I'm a Landmarks Commissioner. I'm on the Santa Monica Conservancy Board. And my colleague Ruth Ann spoke earlier, and I will not repeat her comments, but except maybe to share that brilliant idea that was shared by others of making the Third Street Promenade a conservation district. What I wanted to point out that came up in some discussions during the passing of the loose was the fact that the as-built environment and the height limits in the 1984 loose are not the same. And the models that you guys are going to see will hopefully show you what the fully built-out 84 loose looks like compared to what we have now. We don't have that uniform building height on all of the streets like it is on all of those plans. We really have varied heights. We have some landmark buildings that are very tall, like the Bay City Guaranty's Building. We have a lot of what we call in the landmarks world historic fabric, which are one- and two-story buildings, not necessarily eligible to be individual landmarks, but really contribute to that feeling of Santa Monica and the beach town that we would love to see incorporated into new development or just left alone. And we don't have the incentives for that. And I see this process charging on, and as a landmarks commissioner, I have, my commission has been approving demolitions of these buildings with tears in our eyes. Because since 2002, we have been working and advocating and waiting our turn to have our ordinance updated so that we might have some intermediate degree of protection for a lot of those buildings that you guys see that you feel give the character of Santa Monica without necessarily rising to the landmark of a Bay City Guaranty Building or a Central Tower Building. So our landmark, I couldn't help but notice that landmarks are not listed at all on that potential community benefit choice board. I realize that wasn't meant to represent all categories, but I hate being left out. Somebody had mentioned that landmarks should not necessarily be a community benefit, and I just wanted to point out that we don't have enough tools and we don't have strong enough tools, the ones we have aren't strong enough, to protect the landmarks and the historic fabric we have right now. And even while we're waiting for this process to go through, they are dropping like flies. So I'm really here to say, which is not quite on point of height, but somewhat, that we really need to pay attention to what's going on in that arena and to make sure that everybody puts it in their highest priority. A lost landmark is something you can never get back.
Thank you. Thanks, Nina. So let's see, Todd Stevens, Daniel Galamba, Amy Brunel, John Dahl. If you're all here, come on up close and we'll get you lined up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Todd, and I'm an alcoholic. Sorry. That's tomorrow night. Apparently, tonight's anger management. I didn't plan on speaking tonight because I just wanted to come and listen and listen to what people are saying. Because my understanding coming here was this was supposed to be an interactive event where people could voice their concerns, voice their ideas. I hear a lot of concerns. I don't hear so much a lot of ideas. But that's part of the process, I believe. And I believe that's kind of the goal of this. And one of the things I noticed and a reason that I'm up here is because I didn't see a lot of contingent of young people. I saw a few since I put my card in. But early on, a lot of older people are speaking and talking about their concerns and whatnot. And one of the things that I would like to ask is, is what can we do to get younger people more involved in this process? You know, and I look at the city, but I also look at the neighborhood communities. You know, let me ask you this question. What is the average age of some of the neighborhood communities out there? I mean, what kind of diversity are we trying to capture within our neighborhood so that when we do meet, that we're getting a full representation of the community? Not just those in a room, but those that are out there that couldn't come tonight? To give you an example, I have a newborn baby and a wife at home. Instead of spending my time with them, a five-and-a-half-month-old baby, I'm here tonight because I care. And I resent some of the comments that might imply that, oh, I'm here because I have a different view than you, that I might be here for a different reason, that somebody coaxed me to come here or something like that. I'm here because I care. I'm here because I care about development, I care about the city. And a couple of other things that caught my mind, I just want to address. And Los Angeles architecture is a far cry from Rome and Paris. To make that analogy, I get where he's, the point that we're making, but I'm sorry, Los Angeles architecture is not that impressive. And there's a lot of growth that we can do with that. The other thing I'd like to talk about is my experience back to this age issue, is that in, I lived in Denver for a while, and I've had the privilege of living in different areas and being involved in different communities, you know, from Detroit to Denver to here. And it's the same issue, you know? There is an age disparity in these organizations and in these community meetings. And what can we do to really reach to the community? Reach to the old, reach to the young, reach to the men, reach to the women, the minorities, the low-income? We had the same problem in Denver. We had the same disparity, same age disparity, you know, 45 and over for majority of the comments. And a lot of times, the people that show up at these community organizations are people that are opposed against, opposed to the ideas being presented. My understanding was, we're here to talk about, you know, the loose, the opportunities within the loose. What does that mean for the community? And because of this dialogue, this is great, because I've heard through this, this is my second meeting, and it's because of these meetings that I became aware of this process. And it's also because of these meetings that we also need to address the issues of what can we do to reach out to more people and get a more, I guess, representational viewpoint of what the community really thinks, instead of a minority of people organized in community organizations that exclude younger people for one reason or another. Intentionally or unintentionally, I'm not making accusations. The other issue too is, let's talk about, a lot of people, there's a lot of problems in Santa Monica. And honestly, arriving into Santa Monica, you know, is not a great experience. And the reason that Santa Monica is as popular as it is is location. It's not, because it's on the ocean. Long Beach is on the ocean. Long Beach is not Santa Monica. It's proximity to what? It's proximity to LA, proximity to LAX, proximity to Hollywood. It's proximity to local tourist destinations that make Santa Monica a draw. And a big part of that draw is because of the density within Santa Monica. And if we look at the density and we look at the needs that the society has and what we want to produce here in Santa Monica and what we want to do to improve the traffic, you know, better transportation, better parking, to be able to do all that, we have to fund it somehow. And what I'm saying is, a lot of the times when you come out on weekends, the traffic sucks. It really does. And, you know, there's a big tourism market here, and it's that tourism market's adding to the congestion. And let's take advantage of that. Hotels offer a great opportunity to provide a tax base for us to fund those things that we want to subsidize. Traffic resolutions, low-income housing, all that takes money. And I think that by giving developers an opportunity, and not all developers are evil, and I think you all know that, give developer an opportunity to pencil out their projects so that they can make some adjustments as necessary. Every city has a means and a method of dealing with certain issues and certain criteria that might not suit certain sites. And we need to look at those opportunities so that the developers have the ability to provide what is necessary for the city in all those different aspects of it, not just, you know, because a building is too tall, it's bad. Sometimes a building can be tall and not be bad at all. There's nothing wrong with, you know, why is it, why is it a height issue and not more an aesthetic issue? Because I'll be honest, the oceanfront, as quaint as it may be, architecturally is lacking, in my opinion. And I think there's definitely room for growth in a lot of different things. But it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we can't look at all sorts of different options. That's it.
Thank you, Todd. Okay. We're almost down to the end of the stack here. Just a few more cards. We do have an official wrap-up by our planning commission. They opened the meeting tonight. So we have Daniel Galamba, Amy Brunel, John Dahl, Amy, and John C. Smith, Scott Schoenfeld.
Hi, my name is Amy Brunel. And I want you to know that after all these hours, I'm really hungry. So I just want to say that. Really hungry. Just thinking I was really hungry. Okay. I'm also Weight Watcher leader, so that's really funny also. Okay. Hi, everybody. Half my members are here tonight. And by the way, I do 12 meetings a week, so if you'd like to come to Weight Watchers, I'm really good. So I just want to say that. Okay. I have been part of this city. I was, I was a student the first day that Santa Monica Alternative Schoolhouse opened. I've lived here almost my whole life, back and forth. And I've seen a lot of things. And I do want to address, I've learned a lot. So first of all, thanks to everybody who spoke, because I really learned a lot. But I got to tell you, I was talking in a Weight Watcher meeting how I was going to be by myself at City Hall with a sign, and one of the women go, wait, there's a meeting. I didn't hear about this meeting, and I tried to read the papers, and I tried to be informed, and I am not on anybody's list, obviously, because I never heard about it unless somebody told me. So anyway, I think that the reach out, I'm going to try to pay more attention and be conscious of that, and I appreciate that help and support back. I just want to clear up a few little weird things that I've noticed in this trend of age difference and diversity difference and all these interesting things that have come up tonight. Okay. And I may be a little provocative. Those of you who know me know that's my specialty. Okay. So I got to tell you something. I am just so darn disappointed with that Santa Monica mall. I'm saying it. I'm saying it. I've been through this city many times, okay? I thought the mall would be about bringing people to the city. It was about people who could afford Tiffany's. I couldn't believe how ugly I think the architecture is. You want to talk about ugly? I couldn't believe it. I thought it was going to be charming and Santa Monica-like, and, you know, like, we have these amazing historical buildings in Santa Monica, and I thought that's what it was going to be. And I remember walking around going, are you, really? Really? Okay, now, interesting, let me add to this. Two months after it opened, I went to Sears. And I asked the employees, I got five of them, and I asked the employees, who all were of African-American or Latino descent, have any of you been to the new mall across the street? And not one had even walked in to see the new mall. Because I believe that they knew on some unconscious level that that mall was not a welcoming place for them. And so when people say to me, oh, all the buildup and all these, oh, let's talk about the schools. I love this one. Oh, we're going to give money to the schools. Really? Okay, Patricia Crane and I were on the old special ed stuff 150 years ago, okay? And there's no money, there has never been money, and you hear about all these, you know, tax things. I love these people who go, oh, we're going to build because we're going to give all this money to the schools. Okay, let's talk lottery. Okay, that didn't happen. I feel like some of y'all need a little historical perspective. When the lottery came, all that money that was, the schools were getting from the state disappeared, and all the money the schools got was from lottery. So it's not like we got more. They just replaced one funding for the other, and that's what's happening again. So I don't buy it at all that this is going to happen. I really want to talk about diversity of peoples. Not just old and young, but I want to talk about diversity of a real map, a social economic as well as a race diversity in Santa Monica. And we didn't even have it in this meeting tonight. Okay, so when people say affordable housing, I'm like, really? Do you know that a lot of the affordable housing can actually go away once those people move out of our cities and the developers are allowed to have more flexibility with their pricing? I really think that some of this just needs a little bit more historical reference. It's not true. We're not this, you know, I'm not against building, I'm not against that. But boy, I would have liked to have seen a mall that respected our sort of unique architecture. I don't know what this, all this stuff is about, you know, we're, I just think there's a dream here, and I feel like I'm going, oh my God, there were no weapons of mass destruction. That's how I feel tonight. The whole night, I keep yelling out, this is not going to happen. I don't know what y'all are thinking, and it's not going to happen. Okay, so a lot more careful input. I love what everybody said, I love that. I want to say a few more things. I have a friend who's wealthy and can stay at the Lowe's Hotel when she comes and visits. And she came last summer, and she said, oh, drive down to the mall and come see me. And I said, and I didn't even know I was going to say this, I said, oh, I don't drive to downtown Santa Monica in the summer. You have to come here, because I live in, what do you call that now, between Wilshire and Montana, Wilmont? I live over there. And so I was like, oh, no, you have to go here. We go to the rave theater, we go to Century City, but I can't go down here. I can't go down here in the summertime. I love the biking people. Okay, I love that. First of all, I've seen more bikers break more laws recently than I can possibly even tell you. Okay? And where's the helmets? I never see those. And by the way, I have kids. So I feel like a lot of people who have talked up here tonight are people without children because you can't trawl up your whole family on a bike. I would love that. But I would like to have an idea. My gentleman before me said, I haven't heard ideas. So I'm suggesting an idea. I would like a trolley system down Wilshire Boulevard. I would get on the trolley, if you made it easy for me, I would pop the whole family on and we'd all trolley down. I'd be all like San Francisco, that'd be awesome. Okay, I totally can do that. All right, so I want to make some suggestions of ideas. All right, I don't want to be a sore spot here. Oh, the other thing, let's remember this. We had a big argument about the people who work at those big hotels getting a cost of living. Anybody remember that? And it was all us liberals who were like, uh-oh, that's not fair, because not only can they not live in our city, but they can't even afford what they're making. Anybody remember that? So the hotels being here doesn't mean that it all is so groovy. I don't know where all that's coming from, because you're not remembering your history. Okay, it's no, there's no equity here. All right? There is a sense of greed. This is what happens. This is our whole country. So I'd like to protect that a little bit, and I don't want to like, you know, drink the Kool-Aid so much. I think that we got to think about that. All right. I'd like it to, I remember asking Neil Schmidt, who was 14, oh, how many persons was that? I don't know, we've had like five, I don't know, Kevin, tell me. How many people have we had? 100. Neil Schmidt was our old superintendent. And I said to him, what's happening with the funding from these big corporations like Sony and things like that? And he said, well, we're just trying to get some grants from them, like $100,000. And I was like, are you kidding me? They should be paying a million just to do business here. Okay? This city doesn't work like that, and you don't understand that. These big corporations that all moved into all these things, they're not paying for our schools, they're not granting each school. See, I think all those big corporations should have to take on one school, okay, and will divide it all up so that they're funding those schools with their taxes so that we have the best schools in the country. That's not happening. So again, that disconnect between really understanding what's available and what happens and historical reference, it's not coming out of nowhere. Hold on, I've got more notes. I had to write on my bank receipts because I didn't know I was going to talk tonight. Oh, I love this facade omni. Who said that? Facet omni, facade omni. I love that term. That was awesome. That building on Pico, okay, everybody, think about it for a minute. Pico and Stewart. There's a new housing thing. What the hell is up with that? It looks like baby poop colors. It is the ugliest thing I've ever seen, and they're building these things all over. They want to build two in our area, right? They want to build one at Bank of America on Berkeley and Wilshire, and another one so we can have more people who can't afford to live here and who can't drive, right? Oh, let's just talk about the parking. When did Santa Monica become a... When did Santa Monica become a place where I can park on your street, but you can't park on mine? Right? Right? There's no equity in this city. At McKinley, Kevin's been working on this for years. Kevin knows, because we used to talk. At McKinley Elementary School, parents can't park on the streets to take their children to the school. Okay? We have inequitable parking, and so all these things about land, I'm like, you guys, we have such mess. We have such mess. It's not coming out of nowhere. I got, I just wrote these notes tonight. I've been here almost my whole life. It's not coming out of nowhere. So all of these things, the infrastructure has to be addressed, the situations have to be addressed. I'm not against, look, I love that, we got to look at the arc, fine, let's look at it. Okay, but to naively think that those developers are going to give money to the schools and money to our city, and we're going to be all so fabulous, that's not true. And it's not based on the last, how many years we've been dealing with this. And if anybody was here, they'd all stand up and say, that's right. All right, let me just, I've got no more notes. See, I'm a very entertaining speaker. Okay. Oh, I love business opportunities. I love you guys saying that. I hope we do find business opportunities, that would be awesome, but I'd really like to see diversity where people could really be there. And what is the benefit? And let's see, isn't it true, I want money for schools, I still want that. Okay, that's good. Oh, yeah, with kids. Oh, yeah, you got, guys, a lot of you were single people who talked tonight, or people with young people, kids. You haven't been around here when there's no money for your children, when we can't afford nurses at our school, when we can't afford librarians, and this is what's happening in our city. So please don't tell me about more money coming for developers, because I'm like, if you could guarantee me that that money would go to the schools, I might say, all right, I'll look at that. But it's not going to happen. Okay? And greed breeds greed. And that's just, we're just, we're just a part of the whole world. That's all that we're dealing with. But we have a better way to do it here. So I appreciate you letting me talk. I don't know, I'm so tired and I'm starving, and I'm going to go. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. John Dahl, Scott Schoenfeld, Albin. Here we go.
I'm John Dahl. After being here since six tonight, as you have been, I would now be remiss by not expressing my view. I'm a Santa Monica stakeholder, having been born here and still live here.
Please, wait. Hello. We just need a little by, please, for our speakers. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm a Santa Monica stakeholder, having been born here and still live here. I can't be as eloquent as many residents before me tonight, nor do I want to be repetitive. So let me say simply that I agree with those speaking before me regarding limiting heights, reducing density, eliminating the opportunity sites, addressing parking and traffic congestions, and following existing zoning and the loose principles. I understand change isn't inevitable, but all of this has gone too far. It's late. Thank you for listening to my views and our views.
Thank you, John. Okay, Scott is next up.
Hi. I just wanted to address what I believe to be a couple of just misconceptions about the concept of the opportunity site. Again, the loose identified the opportunity sites as sites located, a lot of, in a lot of cases, sites located either on the edge of downtown or close to transit that could provide significant community benefit. It sounds like, I mean, we've heard a lot tonight that people want to just put the same height and density limitations on the opportunity sites that you have in the rest of downtown. What that essentially does is it makes the opportunity sites the exact same as the rest of that, of downtown. What that then does, it eliminates the opportunity for the significant community benefits. So you will not have an ice skating rink, for example, on Fourth and, on Fourth and Arizona. You may not have a park on another opportunity site. You may not have significant Fifth and Arizona. Or I want, you know, public parking in one of the freeway sites. We haven't had that conversation yet, and I think we owe it to all of ourselves to have that conversation before you just put that same limitation on those sites, because what that essentially does tonight or in this process is basically eliminate the opportunity for any of those benefits. And there are many people who are not in this room tonight who may say, I want that ice skating rink. And I think, again, we owe it to ourselves to study that further before we just put this same limitation on everything. But the flexibility in this process will allow the community, city staff, the planning commission, city council to decide what ends up going on those sites. And again, developers are not asking for infinite limitations. Council will put limits on those sites. The community, and that will happen after input from staff, after input from the planning commission, and most importantly, after input from all of you.
They are.
And my last point is, is, you know, people are saying that they're, that the city should just fund, you know, that public parking, for example, on some of these sites is not a community benefit, and some of the, and open space is not a community benefit. The fact is, is that with the disappearance of the redevelopment agencies, there is no funding available for all those things. So in order, if you want public parking on some of these sites, or if you want new parks, funding for, you know, a museum, public art, iconic architecture, all these ideas that have been identified as potential community benefits, they have to be funded by the developers. And again, what I think staff is asking and what the development community is asking is not, you know, should there be height limitations, but what types of community benefits do you want on these opportunity sites? And we can take that information and then incorporate it into these developments. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Albin is the final speaker of the evening, I believe. We will.
I put a speaker card in.
Okay, I will check it. We might have somehow missed you, but we'll get you up. Albin. Were there other speakers who wanted to speak that maybe we missed their names somehow? One, two. Okay, that's why we're here. No problem.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Albin Gillich. I'm on the Reckon Parks Commission and on the board of one of the neighborhood groups. I'm going to be very short and sweet. There have been a lot of great things said tonight, and as one of my board members likes to say sometimes, that in politics, everything's been said, but not everyone has said it. So I'm not going to be guilty of that at almost 11 o'clock at night, when we have to work tomorrow. So my question is pretty much to the planning commission and to, well, before I get to the question, I want to thank you guys for doing this. This is a great meeting, very well attended. It was definitely something that needed to happen. So my question to all of you is, what happens next?
We'll talk about that after.
Okay. Because this is a pretty impressive piece of work here, and that's, yeah, that's all I want to know is what happens next.
We will get to that, so don't go away. Okay, let's see.
Hi, my name is Adam Rakounis. I put a card in, and it must have gotten eaten by the stack or something. You have it? Hot dang, all right. I'll be really quick. I'm a member of the Wilshire, Montana Neighborhood Coalition. We sent out a big survey to everyone in our neighborhood. We got 294 responses, and we had a fun evening collating them, and I just wanted to let staff and the planning commission know that our top three biggest issues, adequate parking, redevelopment, and traffic. Two-thirds of respondents said that was their prime, their prime concern in our neighborhood. They also, 18% of them said that the quality of life here is better. 62% of them said it was worse. That's a pretty big jump, I think. That was my official thing. On a personal note, I want to say that while I was born here, I grew up in Orange County. I know from sprawl. I have seen it. And all the talk about building up, that's just going to be taking all that sprawl and wrapping it in a nice big tube designed by Frank Gehry and everyone else and sticking it there in downtown. So all the stuff that comes with sprawl, the traffic, the pollution, the crowds, we're still going to have it. I ride my bicycle, I rode here tonight, and I am terrified of the thought of riding down through downtown when you go and drop any massive developments there. All the cars, even with the buses and the trains, I have to go in share lanes, and it is dangerous out there, and it will only get worse if we build up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Yes, sir.
Mitchell, thank you.
Mitchell, I do have you. Okay. I, you know, it's been wonderful hearing everything said tonight. Everything, it's, you know, it's wonderful being here. We have a small audience, and I like it that way. But this thing about traffic, you know, I always, I like to speak about that, and I think there's one solution to it, to the development. It's not the best thing, but I think it's better than what we have with development, development and the required parking. I think we could have development, but not have the required parking. Most of this development is around mass transit corridors already. And by, you know, of course, by having the development as it is now, we're just compounding our congestion. So I like the Martin idea, and was, of not requiring parking on these new developments and mitigating the increased height that they're asking for, these developers. Basically, that's, I, basically, I like to reiterate, I think we could still have development and not add to our traffic congestion if you don't add the parking requirement to the development. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. We're now going to ask our planning commission to come back in the front to formally close tonight's meeting, but before we do, I will say a couple of things on next steps. First of all, let's give a round of applause to all the people who spoke tonight for their passion, their dedication to the city, their willingness to come here in front of the group and express their views. We do appreciate it. I do want to state again, we will have the PowerPoint slide presentation on the website. We will have notes from the meeting tonight. We'd like to get copies of any written comment cards here. Will be part of the record. We can use this. If you drop those off on the sign-in table on your way out the door, we'd appreciate it. We can safely say there will be more meetings on the downtown strategic or specific plan. We're a long way from done, as was said at the very beginning. We're in the middle of the drafting of the plan. We're still studying options. We haven't created a draft plan. There is no formal draft plan. There's no program EIR that's been started yet. All of that has to happen. Planning commission hearings, city council hearings, plus there's going to be a lot more community meetings in between all of that. So again, I want to thank you all for coming this evening, staying through to the end, and I appreciate your participation here in the city of Santa Monica. We will turn it back to Gerda and the planning commission, please.
Thank you very much. Can you just, I didn't quite hear the part where you said what was going to be the next step and when that was going to happen? And I think people want to be more clear about.
Right, well, we are going to put the information from tonight's meeting probably out on the website in the next week or two, whenever we get it done and edited and properly documented. As far as meetings after this, I would have to turn to staff. I don't know what the plan is, but probably in the months ahead, before the summer, there could be. It's going to probably go on from there. There will have to be a schedule posted. We don't have that yet.
Okay, because what I'm hearing from staff is there's no scheduled date at this point.